Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 10 minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 5 minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in 2 minutes. Okay, if everybody would find a seat. We'll get started in just 1 minute. Welcome you all here. Glad to see you here. Just to let you know how we will start. As always, in just a minute, I'll ask you to stand for the invocation. And then for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are part of a faith group who would like to participate in the invocation, you are welcome to do so. Just send an email to k, the letter K, green at volusia.org. This is Carissa over here, and she will get you all set up to do that. This morning, we have Pastor Brad Gwartney of Stetson Baptist Church, who will lead us in the invocation. So if you would care to stand for that, please rise.
Well, Council and community, it's good to be here today and an honor to get a chance to pray for you and with you as we see God's work done in our great community. Let's pray together. Father God, I thank you so much that you're the great provider. And today, Lord, we have a full day of meetings. So we pray for wisdom as decisions are made and as topics are discussed. God, we pray for patience as we do our best to try to make the best of this community. God, we know that you want to do great things through each of us individually. And so, God, I pray during this time and during this season, this will be a moment for us to reflect on where we are with our relationship with you. And God, I pray that you draw us into an ever closer relationship with you. God, I thank you so much that you're forward to land and you're forward Volusia County. And I pray that as we do our best to honor you with our time and our efforts and our energy, that you get all the glory for that. Father God, we love you and we thank you. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, as always. Okay, Carissa, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Santiago. Mr. Dempsey. Mr. Johansson. Mr. Kent. Mr. Reinhardt.
Here.
Mr. Brower.
We do have a quorum. We are short one person, Troy Kent, who is probably on his way. Does anybody know? He won't be here. Okay. All right, we do have a quorum, though we have some public participation, which is how we always start our meetings. I will call your name, and you can just come up to the podium. Podium can go up or down because we would like to have the microphone right in front of you so that everybody can hear you and so that it's properly recorded. You will have 3 minutes to talk about subjects that affect the county. And there is a clock, a timer, on the monitor in front of you and overhead on the screen. So please try and stick to the 3 minutes because we have quite a few and growing list of people who want to talk. First, we have Frank Gingras. And when you come down, please just tell us where you're from in the county. You don't have to give your full address for safety reasons, but if you would tell us what part of the county you're from, your representative would like to know that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Frank Gingras, Volusia County resident since 1975. My first time in front of the council. I made a mistake selling a vacant lot I own to Hontown Landing Marina. I thought it would be okay with the 35-foot setback required next to my residence. The owner later asked me for a 5-foot setback instead. When I refused, the harassment has not stopped. I tried to ignore this. It only got worse. I tried to contact him. He didn't care to speak to me. In March, I did have to file complaints with the county. The violations are still there since March. These include working on boats against our side of home by our bedroom, right up against the house. Parking under historic tree canopies. There's two beautiful historic trees. Environmentally told them they can't, but they continue in defiance. And I love the nature. I live out at the St. John's River, and it's sad to see. Of course, on the weekends is when he's there all the time. During the week, he knows the hours of the environmental people, so vehicles move. Employees are living on the houseboat. The employee harasses my wife and myself with loud lake music, shouting obscenities at us, lining the property with empty beer bottles, hanging vulgar signs, shining bright lights on our bedroom. I've been told the electric and septic tanks on this lot were never permitted. I'm asking the county to enforce their own rules. The 35-foot setbacks, the fence between our property, no employees living in the setback area. For Hontown Island, or sorry, Hontown Landing, to comply with the codes. These are the things that I am asking. And they so far have not been done. I'm frustrated. It's gone from a beautiful place to live to hell. It's just, it's sad. And with that, I hope somebody can do something. I don't know where to go after this, if you guys can and ladies. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Dyer, your name is on the, is that a mistake? Or did you need to make an opening announcement?
It was a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoltan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zoltan Karakas, and I lived in Volusia County for the past 40 years. I had the great pleasure and joy to own and manage Daytona Shirt Shop located on 825 East International Speedway Boulevard, which is the 92 Beach Ramp. Today, I am here to discuss a matter that is deeply affecting our business and by extension, our community. As you all know, the 92 Beach Ramp currently is under, where our store is located, is currently under remodeling and renovation. I want to highlight the impact of the ongoing construction in front of our store. Unlike previous construction projects in our city and community where streets remained partially accessible during construction, this current project has almost completely blocked off our access to our store. Because the fence surrounding the construction site, our store is now almost isolated from the main road. There is about 200 feet, 6-foot sidewalk from A1A to our store. And also, I'd like to state that the beach is completely closed, so there is no beach access to our stores anymore. This has caused a significant drop in foot traffic and visibility, resulting in 80% to 100% decline to our business. The financial strain is considerable. We are facing expenses, rent, wages, insurance, utility, et cetera, of roughly about $400 a day. With these losses, it's becoming increasingly difficult to survive and the approximate 8 months of construction period given by the county. Given the challenges, I'm here to request some form of compensation in form of some government or state funds for the losses we incurred. We believe that with the help and support of the County of Volusia, we can make it during this difficult time and ensure that we are able to continue serving our community once the construction is completed. We have discussed this matter with Mr. Brower. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam Tijos.
Thank you. Thank you all. I own Sam's Coal Fire Pizza at 817 East International, right next to Zoli's. And before signing my lease, about a year and a half ago, I spoke with the Director of Coastal, and I was assured that at that time, they will only close half the road, leaving the other half open. So we'll be able to get some business in. June 10th begins our high season. June 10th, they decided to close down the entire street completely. They shut down the access to the beach. They cut both, they closed both lanes. Now, everything that we carry is basically perishable. I tried to stay open. Every day, I'm throwing out about $500, $600 worth of food. The dough rises, you gotta throw it out if you don't use it. It just became such a problem. Employees weren't making tip money. We decided to close. With that, we still have to pay our rent, all our obligations. We gotta, we have to keep the utilities on. We have to pay our insurance every single month. Now, initially, like I said, I was told that they will keep half the road open, work on that half, and once it's complete, they're gonna work on the second half. They have not done that. It's just been a complete disaster. It looks like a war zone out there. And 3 months now, this week is 3 months, and hardly any work has been done. They just, last 2 weeks, it's just been 2, 3 people there working. So they don't have the seawall. They ordered it late. Everything was ordered late. And this project, they're looking now another year for it to be completed instead of the 8 to 9 months. So I am asking if there's any kind of funding that the county can provide to at least help us cover our utilities, our rent, just to get us by through this. Because the last thing we want to do is just hand over the keys to the landlord and then have him come after us for the remainder of the lease. It's just been, it's a nightmare. It's just a complete nightmare. And I also saw so much potential in that area that I took the 831 East International locations to bring in a Nathan's franchise in there. And that now, I'm obligated under that lease, but everything else is at halt. So I appreciate you taking this time, and please think of us, you know, during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming in. Paul Richardson.
Morning, Council. My name is Paul Richardson of the Land. I'm glad that you're taking the 3.9 million from the American Rescue Plan Act to put towards road safety and pedestrian safety projects. It's a good time to do this. Thankfully, we have the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act to use so we don't have to increase the mileage. However, I hope that you're not increasing the mileage for political reasons. Local governments in Florida not only have to have a balanced budget, but also keep a reserve fund. Being official conservatives is a different thing here than on the federal level. You can't guarantee that you won't increase taxes, and the American Rescue Plan Act funds will not be around forever. Now, it seems that we recently needed a mileage rate of 3.2862 at one point, up 0.855 from the current 3.200 sub of mileage. Luckily, we can nix that plan. In these tough times, Volusia County citizens need any assistance we can get. At no point am I saying we have to raise the mileage. But what about tomorrow? Once those American Rescue Plan Funds Acts are used, the future of Volusia County Council is going to have to raise the mileage. All I ask is that you make sure that you're making the right assistance for today and the future. God bless Volusia County. God bless America and her eternal ally, Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. Nanette McKeel-Patrelo.
County Council and County Management, good morning. My name is Nanette McKeel-Patrelo. I'm a resident of Daytona Beach. Here speaking today as President of Daytona Dog Beach, Inc. This morning, after completing 10 months of the dog-friendly beach pilot, I bring you a positive message. Since the launch of the pilot, we've seen responsible pet owners and happy dogs enjoying the beach. The community has come together to create a safe, environmentally sound, courteous environment for courteous environment for residents and visitors alike. Many positive benefits have been recognized, and let me share just a few. First, through July, our Paw Ambassador Volunteers removed 2,500 pounds of trash from the Dog Friendly Beach. Adding that to the amount from our beach cleanup dating back to July of 2021, our organization has removed 3,800 pounds of trash from Volusia Beaches. Second, Latitude Margaritaville introduced a brand-wide day of service in support of Singing for a Change, a nonprofit created by Jimmy Buffett. Singing for Change supports inclusive grassroots organizations that inspire personal growth, community integration, and enhances awareness that collectively, people can bring about positive change. For the inaugural Jimmy Buffett Day, Latitude Margaritaville chose Daytona Dog Beach, Inc. as their partner organization. With a special event permit, we hosted a people-in-paws beach cleanup from the Main Street Pier to Silver Beach on Jimmy Buffett Day this past Friday. 180 Margaritaville residents participated, removed 230 pounds of trash from that one-mile stretch of beach. I did provide Carissa with copies of our August newsletter, you'll get them at the end of the meeting, which outlines more positive benefits that we've achieved and some that are underway. I want to express appreciation for the collaboration, responsiveness, and assistance our nonprofit has received working with county divisions. Special thanks to Tamara Malfers and Laney Lewis from Beach Safety, Jessica Fentress and Terry Propst from Coastal, and Angela Miedma from Animal Services. Their engagement with our organization promotes partnership and helps us achieve common objectives that lead to positive outcomes within our community. And Mark Swanson, congratulations on a remarkable career filled with dedication and a pursuit of excellence that has inspired many. Mark, I wish you all the joy, relaxation, and excitement that retirement brings. May you cherish your time with your loved ones, follow your passions, and savor the freedom it offers. Thank you to all, and I'm always available if anybody wants to learn more about what we're up to. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you share the name of your newsletter?
It's called Sandy, it's called Sandy Tales. We started it in 2021, so.
I just thought everybody would enjoy that. Barbara from Orange City.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Sandsbury. I've been a resident of Volusia County for six years in, as I said, Orange City. I'm here this morning to speak about the Amendment Four, which will be on the November ballot, which will, if it gets passed, be enshrined in the Florida Constitution. And I'm sure many of us are aware that it would be almost impossible to remove that. The problem with this amendment is the fact that the wording is very vague. It doesn't define any of the terms that are most important, such as healthcare provider, which means that a medical doctor would no longer be required, that it could be any, whatever you consider a healthcare provider. It might be a chiropractor, it might be a dentist, it could be anyone. It could be an abortion staff member in an abortion clinic. There are other problems with this amendment. It would remove many of the health and safety regulations that would actually support women. So this amendment, again, is not really helping women. It also removes the parental consent for minors, which would be the only surgery that a child would be able to have without a parent consent. The language is very vague and deceptive. I'm not sure why anyone would write an amendment this way. It would seem that you'd want voters to understand what an amendment is about. But it definitely endangers the lives of women because it doesn't consider so many, so many things that are important, including the fact that how a woman is after an abortion, as far as grieving, et cetera. I am representing Little Lives Matter, which is a pro-life group, and all pro-life people that feel that babies have the right, as well as women, to have the health and safety regulations in place and not have them removed. And that, that's my main reason for presenting this today, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth Pompey.
Good morning. My name's Elizabeth Pompey, and I live on Halifax Drive in Temoca Farms Village, which you guys have all learned about here recently. Anyway, I'm going to read from this because it's a couple combined, from a couple other of my neighbors. So I'm here today in support of the Volusia Forever Acquisition Proposal of the McDonald Cattle Ranch off Temoca Farms Road, which I believe comes before you on the 13th. So we, my, some of my neighbors have forwarded letters to the council in support of the acquisition, since they were unable to come today. They have asked me to read portions of their letters to you. Chelsea, who lives on Halifax Drives, mentions in her letter how the acquisition will keep the mission and goals of Volusia Forever Program "to protect the county's natural biodiversity and resources. In preserving this piece of land, we can prevent displacement of wildlife, avoid water cycle disruption, and decrease soil erosion. If developed, it would cause more flooding and additional contamination into the Spruce Creek Basin." Mike, who lives on Temoca Farms Road, remembers when this working cattle ranch that abuts the Longleaf Plantation property from his younger days, growing up hiking, hunting, and camping on this property owned by the McDonald's, whom he knows very well. He states Miller's Creek runs through the property and is still pristine. Cattle, calves, deer, black bear, hogs, and elusive Florida panther can be seen on this beautiful property, that Mike states is one of God's great gifts to the community. And he states, "What a, what a gift for the future generations of Volusia County residents than to preserve this property and others like it. To sustain our heritage as a rural farming and open space community, the current land use regulations of the Temoca Farms Village were set in place to do that. As many in Volusia, we are, we already have uncontrolled flooding in this area that needs to be addressed. Preserving this area will keep from adding to this issue any further. Please, when this acquisition comes before you, consider moving it to a high priority." Thank you for listening.
Thank you. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. First of all, on Item Three, the retirement of Mark Swanson, I would ask you to deny that. Just, just for a couple of years, like 10 or 15 years, where we can find a replacement that's comparable. So other than that, maybe you might think about him, keeping him. Secondly, with regard to the beach approach, I have to admit, it is the worst bungled road. And we, in Daytona Beach, we've had some horrible ones. A1A several times, Main Street, et cetera. The traffic light for those exiting the beach or from that area is still on. The road's been closed for several months, and yet you have to sit there and twiddle your thumbs while no traffic is moving for no reason. Also, lanes are closed that can be opened to turn because you're stuck there with two lanes, one of which, if you want to turn at those lights, at Grandview or Halifax or whatever, there is space to put a turning lane, they just block it off for no, for apparently no reason. They're not doing any work on the area. They just closed the lane because that's what they wanted to do. It is causing problems, not only for the residents or tourists, and now you're finding out are business people. It is a terrible, and I would ask you to look into it. Third, I was asked, well, actually Jeff brought it up at the last meeting on my voting. I get asked all the time who I'm pushing for. In Sunday's paper, there were several people who were backing his opponent. And I'm asked all the time, I ask from somebody from the chamber, "Who are you looking for in your city and in the county?" It's unfortunate, we don't have a radio station any longer that will be able to be discussing who's good, who's bad, and what their views are. We no longer have a newspaper that's published seven days a week that will discuss who's good, who's bad, whatever. Jeff assumes, because I voted against him last time, I'm gonna vote against him this time. That's not the case, all right? Yes, I've been harping on him to grow up and be a leader for four years. It doesn't mean that he hasn't moved at all, all right? There's been tremendous movement on this council. The previous first two years, he was bounced on by only six of the seven members attacked him. Now he only has two. So he's gained a bit of your appreciation because he himself has changed. So I'm asking that at some point, you all let the public know how you feel because they're not getting it from anywhere else. Actually, back Jeff, sort of. Absolutely, Mark. I mean, Matt, excuse me. Talk to you after the.
Thank God, that's over. Don, did you write that?
He needs, he needs to have the disclosure on there.
Ew, yeah. Okay. Where are we? Before I ask for a motion on Item One, which is the approval of the agenda, Mark Watts, could, would you come up? The reason I'm doing this is this will affect the agenda. I know that we may have some people here waiting for an item. I know there's people online that are waiting to hear Items Five and Six, and I believe you have some news on it.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. For the record, Mark Watts with the Law Firm in Cobb, Cole, 231 North Woodland Boulevard, Deland. We had been monitoring just some of the conversation that was happening on some social media platforms over the past couple of weeks. This item was at PLDRC and did not have any objection or concern at that. We heard some in the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhoods. And so we'd like to ask for a 90-day continuance so that we can schedule a neighborhood meeting, give us an opportunity to listen to what the concerns are. Mr. Chairman, I think you, you know, from our record, we'd like to try and come up with compromise where we can. If there's things that we can do to revise the application to address some of the concerns, we would like to have that opportunity and sit down with some of the neighboring property owners. So I'm asking for 90 days because I'm gonna be out of town for the next about 10 days. It'll give me time to then schedule a meeting, get notices sent out to the surrounding neighborhoods, have that meeting, and then follow up with staff with any potential revisions that result from those conversations. So other than.
So you're gonna table it for a time certain in 90 days and.
They'll bring it to your first meeting in December.
David Santiago, don't go away yet.
Procedurally speaking, we're gonna table it, maybe.
I'm requesting, that's, I'm here requesting, that's correct.
I just wanted to say, you know, I'm open to the extension. I have to make this public announcement to you. It concerns me that social media is driving your narrative. I hope that's not the case, you hope you're working with our staff. Certainly, we want to address the neighboring residents' concerns. I don't want to diminish that. But social media's just become such a poison well lately, these keyboard warriors. And it's normally, I'll finish in a second. Normally, there's a small handful of people that try to dictate the, the future of half a million people or more in this county. So I just, warnings.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate that. And I don't think we, you know, look at it and have that drive our, you know, what we're asking to do. But when we see an opportunity to maybe correct some misunderstandings or provide additional detail and education about how the process is set up to work with regard to stormwater design and traffic and things of that nature, I just want to take that opportunity, if you'll provide it, so that we can try and answer some of those questions before we're trying to do it, you know, from, in front of the dais, so.
Matt Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. And Mr. Santiago, I certainly understand what you're saying with respect to some people on social media that may try to dictate that. But that is their one outlet to be able to voice that. And we've received several, at least I have, several emails with respect for that. We've talked about that. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion to agree with the continuance for 90 days or as stated.
Mr. Reinhardt, if you wish to make that motion, 90 days would take us.
Or a date.
December 3rd meeting at 9:30 or later.
9:30.
December what?
Third.
December 3rd.
And you are, your motion includes approving the rest of the agenda as.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
So we have a, a motion on the floor by Councilman Reinhardt to approve the agenda with Item Five and Six tabled till a time certain, which is December 3rd. Is there a second?
Second. All right, I'll second.
Thank you. Motion is seconded by Councilman Dempsey. Any other discussion? Okay. We have quite a few requests to speak on Five and Six. Would you still like to, to speak on those? Everybody's on.
Mr. Chairman, if we're continuing. We can get copies of those, we can make sure that we include those folks in our invitations to the neighborhood meeting.
Can you get copies of these to Mr. Watts? Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda with this exception, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks for your time this morning.
Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. And that brings us to the consent agenda. We do have two members of the public who would like to speak to the consent agenda. Does any council member have an item they would like to pull for either a comment or a vote?
Comment on K? End question, sorry.
But not a vote?
Not a vote.
Okay. Councilman Santiago will have a comment on K. Anyone else?
Mr. Brower, you do have two public participations wishing to speak. One would only like to speak if the item was pulled, and I believe that was Item K. I could be wrong.
Say that again? One would only like to speak what?
If the item is pulled.
You're not pulling the item, I understand.
Okay. So we have Stephanie and Amy. Amy, would you like to speak still? Come up and do that before we vote. And then Stephanie and Joseph Sullivan, you're welcome to speak as well.
Amy, I'm in the DeLeon Springs Community Association. I realize this is on the consent agenda, but we just want to take time to thank the Volusia Forever Advisory Committee for including the Caraway Lake parcel in their A group. And we certainly hope that you will ratify that. It's an important piece of property, especially for DeLeon Springs with our watershed, the wildlife corridor. And it does have the possibility of being developed with 44 home sites at this point. So it's important to us that that doesn't happen and it stays on Volusia Forever's A-list. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, Joseph.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Ladies first.
Good morning.
Good morning. That was brief.
Good morning, everyone. We are just here from Boys and Girls Club of Volusia and Flagler Counties. First, I just want to say thank you to this council. We have a teen center project that is underway in Deland. And we just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all your support. And I'll let you speak and.
My name's Joe, I've been here since 1992. Yes, we always compare our bald heads. But just here to say thank you. Again, our club has been in Spring Hill for 25 years. I think we've made a lot of difference in that community. We still have a lot to do. But back in 99, we cleaned up the little building that was built in 1930. That's the one we're gonna tear down and rebuild. The county put a park across the street for us. We built a pavilion there in 2004. The CDVG partnership, we raised 432,000. You guys have matched that, so it's gonna pay dividends for years to come. So our club there is gonna be named after Althea the Beautiful. She's been our club director there for 20. She's been our club director there for 25 years. But without Volusia County's support, myself and this organization wouldn't be here. We're your lead agency for all the after-school programs, and we're different. We're there for kids every day. They can all afford to belong, and this is all we do. So again, just here to say thank you. And your staff have been wonderful because there are a lot of intricacies when you have to build a building and use federal money that we knew nothing about. So they've held our hand. I know people complain about staff all the time, so I'm here to say thank you to them and thank you to you guys for making a big difference. Again, any questions for me or the club? This is going to be a very exciting time for us. I also want to say that once upon a time Congressman Micah got us money to build the new learning center there, too. So we've had a lot of good public-private partnerships, but our one with you, and I can say you guys, is one of the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Reinhardt, second by Councilman Robbins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero, and we will, Councilman Santiago, if you would like to discuss item K.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Brad, just more question, education for, we're all aware, and the public, I think, the last couple of times we've been talking about Volusia Forever. One of my colleagues, last time I asked about how much land in Volusia County is currently preserved in some type of conservation status. Can you give us an update on that?
695,000 acres.
And what does that equate to relative to all the acreage in Volusia County?
About 35%, 36%. 50% is the goal, one to one. I'll stand by what I said last time I did some follow-up.
What's the goal?
One to one.
50%?
Yes.
Okay. And we're currently at 36% of Volusia County is preserved in some type of environmental category?
Yes, sir. I will say, as any good academic, you know, that number will, it can change, you know, based on the type of land that you're conserving, but a good rule of thumb is one to one.
Gotcha. And then if you could, this just popped into my head and through George, if, I don't want to give you direction, if we can get some type of analysis on how, a chart analysis that could show us how much we've been preserving over the years, you know? Year by year, so many acreages have gone up in that, in a chart, so I can see over that duration of time how we're performing in acquisition.
Sure. We action.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brad. And George, are we, we're tabling item three now?
Yeah.
All right. I have a quick comment as well.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see your name.
So, sir, the vice mayor isn't here, unfortunately. So George, again, you did a great job with the consent agenda, and I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
His presence is still felt, even when he's not here. Okay, that takes us to item three, the proposed retirement of Mark Swanson.
It's proposed?
We haven't voted on it yet.
Mr. Chair, it is definitely a bittersweet moment. I mean, we're happy for Mark, but we'll get into, you have to retire sometime, right, Mark? So Mark started his career back with the foundation, EVAC, back in 1985. I think he was about 12 years old, maybe he was a scout or something. He came over with a lot of great people when the council made the decision to take EVAC in-house and make it Volusia County EMS. So he came over in October of 2011 as our clinical services manager. And in that function, he was very well-known. When I got to learn a lot about the organization, I could see right away Mark was one of the key players, as he was the person who kept up all of our clinical standards, made sure that our folks were up to par, kept track of all of our inventory of drugs and controlled substances. So a very important position. And then in 2013, he came to us and said, hey, he'd like to compete for, and he did for the beach services director, and was promoted at that time in 2013. And he served in that function for three and a half years. He was then promoted again in 2016 to the deputy public protection director, where he took on the operational responsibility of many of the units in public protection. At that time, public protection had nearly 1,000 people. We decided with council support, we split that into two functions. And in 2021, Mark was confirmed as the director of public protection. So he's had a very distinguished career here. In addition to the career with those positions, he had another back position that he did very well, and he was the leader of our CISM, Critical Incident Stress Management Team. And Mark was responsible in his team to help people when they've gone through maybe some of the worst moments of their life, a lot of PTSD-type events, maybe also personal tragedy. Mark was always right there with him and his team to help those people, and I think that's a credit to the person he is, and he's always been a big believer in that for everybody. He's been the consummate professional. He knows, he's very, very knowledgeable in all things public protection. He's going to go and spend more time, well, he's got a little side gig he's going to do before he totally retires, but he is married to his wife Jody for 45 years. He has a daughter Caitlin. One of Mark's sayings, there's no greater calling than one of a true public servant. So he's going to continue doing that, he says, even in retirement. Mark will be sorely missed. Thank you for 40 years of great public service and is a great public servant.
We have two members of the council that would like to speak, but why don't you go first?
So I have something here that I'd like to read, so I don't forget anybody. So county council members and staff, first of all, thank you for all your support throughout my career. County council has always been there for me, supporting me, and I truly appreciate that. I will say that today is a great moment, but also a very sad moment as I end my 40-year career with Volusia County. My career has provided me with many opportunities to grow into the person that I am today. My career as a public servant has been purposeful, as I've utilized all the tools I have obtained throughout my career to provide the best service possible to the citizens and visitors of Volusia County. There is no greater calling than one of a true public servant. A very important part of my career was a secret, and the secret to my success has been my enormous emotional and physical support that I have continuously received from my wife and family. It is with that support that I was able to provide for the needs of others. A very wise person told me early in my career to always be truthful to the person that looks back at you in the mirror. Stand up for others when you should do the right thing, even if it makes your peers feel uncomfortable. Remember that there is no right way to do the, there is no right way to do the wrong thing. When it comes to your work, always bring your A-game. Make a difference every day. I wish to thank some key people. First and foremost, George Recktenwald, county manager, who I consider a great friend and who's always believed in me and supported me in the directions I chose to keep public protection moving in the positive direction. Deputy county manager Suzanne Conchon, who has been tremendous mentor, has remained open-minded, has given me a great advice as I have served as a public protection director. The guidance and leadership from both George and Suzanne was instrumental in my success as a public protection director. Lastly, I wish to thank my staff. I could not have ever imagined that I would be blessed with such an amazing support. I continue to be successful because of the unconditional support I receive from them. Operations manager Randa Matuziak, senior staff assistant Michelle McAllister, and management specialist Denise Kozinski. Their unwavering commitment has been and will continue to be remembered, appreciated. As I venture on into my career, I wish the best for Volusia County, and I will continue to pray for each of you and your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Johansson?
Thank you, sir. Mark, I am ecstatic that you're moving on because I know you got, I know you have some views on what you want to do in the future, and, you know, public service is something that I treasure. It's all I know as well. And I very much appreciate every ounce of every day that you've given to the public. And I hope you do it in some other form. I would hope you'd make more than a few more dollars doing it, but I understand that usually our calling doesn't come with big money. But do yourself a favor, sleep in for a day or two, read a book, spend time with family and friends, and then maybe hit the ground running next Monday. All right? Thanks for everything you did for us. I appreciate it.
Councilman Reinhardt?
Thank you, Chair. Mark, thank you for your service. Thank you for being a mentor, a teacher, and a friend. You've helped me out quite a bit and taught me quite a bit during my tenure, and it's valued and it will be, it will be missed. And keep your phone on, like you said, because we'll still be reaching out to you. A couple of little things, I'm a little jealous because I think more corrections showed up for you today than they did for me when I retired. So, but we want to thank you. And same thing, I mean, this is a testament right here with the people from Fire EMS and animal control and corrections, and you've done a phenomenal job and a phenomenal career. And the fact that your next venture will still be, you know, nearby, I'm very, very grateful for that. So thank you very much.
Councilman Robbins?
Thank you, Chair. Who's going to be in the lead for retirements? The number, Jim Judge or?
Retired once.
Okay. All right, we're keeping track. He's on his about 18th time. But Mark, thank you for everything, you know? It's not every day you look at somebody that's been employed in an establishment for this long and for as long as I've been alive, not to make you feel old or anything. So we appreciate you. If I didn't inject some humor in it, it just probably wouldn't be me. But we appreciate you, the staff appreciates you, the public appreciates you, and we're just so thankful for your service and your continued service in this community. So thank you, thank you again. Hopefully you get some time in to relax a little bit and take a breath and reevaluate, and like Jake said, hit the ground running here. So appreciate you, Mark. Thank you so much.
Councilman Santiago?
What's the effective date?
This Friday is my last day.
This Friday? I thought there was a law you can't leave during hurricane season. Well, that's for insurance policy, so thank you for your service. Appreciate working with you.
Thank you.
Well, since the word that we cannot mention was just mentioned, I think I'd be remiss to not thank you for the community of Osteen. I got to know you well during the two storms, which, whose names we are not allowed to mention by order of our chief financial officer, and all storms have been canceled for this year, Mr. Judge. You remember what happened with extensive flooding everywhere, and you became known as the sandbag champion. I don't know how many sandbags were prepared and placed around the county. I know there was a lot of them just in Osteen itself, so you learn a lot about somebody in the face of adversity and around-the-clock challenges. So thank you for your hard work in those kinds of emergencies, and best of luck to you going forward. You're not going far. Okay. And cake at 11? All right.
Well, we'll get together for Mark. It'll be Friday afternoon. Anyone wants to stop by over the historic courthouse?
Okay. Pictures? Okay, okay. Before we take his picture, should we, we should approve this or not approve it? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Reinhardt, second by Jake Johansson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Oh, good. Okay. All right, bottom row, giant step that way.
Jim Judge.
He can't hear you. He's already retired. Again. No, he's not.
Hey, this is good. I see you. Ready? One more. Gotcha.
How about Al? Al, you got it?
Okay, that brings us to item four, the IUPA Beach Safety Collective Bargaining Agreement. Is Dana?
Good morning. Good morning. Deputy Chief Jenkins, Volusia County Beach Safety.
Can somebody raise that for him? There you go.
I learned a few things sitting in the back, though. We're here today, obviously, for the ratification of the contract between the county and the IUPA Watermen's Association. I still have a few words here that I'm going to go ahead and read off that Director Malfer had sent, which I thought she did a very good job with. I want to acknowledge the time, effort, and dedication that both sides have invested in these negotiations. The commitment to reaching a fair and equitable agreement is commendable. This agreement brings much-needed stability and security to our lifeguards, which is crucial given the vital role they play in ensuring the safety of both local and visitors. Ongoing collaboration between the union and the county is essential, and we appreciate the county's dedication to upholding the highest standards in safety of professionalism in the beach safety services. I'd also be remiss in pointing out the support from the council. I appreciate that. And with that, I'd like to hand it over to the union president, Sergeant Ben Westine.
Good morning, everyone. Sergeant Ben Westine, Volusia County Beach Safety. I'm the Volusia Watermen's president for IUPA Local 6039. This is my second contract I've worked on so far. This one took a little while, sometimes arduous, but I would like to take this moment to thank Dana and Randa for their continuing professionalism throughout the whole ordeal. It didn't go unnoticed, and I'm thankful for that. This contract, I'm glad to have it done, gives some stability, like Director Malfer said, for our members. Just on a personal note, I've done this job for almost three decades now. A long time ago, I made a decision to make this a career, and it's been nothing but fulfilling and rewarding for me, and I'm hoping to pass along that to the next generation of lifesaving individuals that come through. I want to hopefully generate that spark and then that gives them that career-minded... It's an extremely important job, and it's my pleasure, all these years, to have served the public in the capacity that I have. When the transition happened, it was an easy choice for me. I weighed the difference between my impact on the public as a lifeguard EMT and as a law enforcement officer when I was doing all three. The lifeguard EMT part surpassed any impact I had, like, the thousands of families. I saw people that come up to me that recognized me, "Hey, you pulled me out of a rip current." Like, it was 20 years ago, but they still recognized it, had an impact on them and their family members. This is the greatest job I've ever had, and I'm optimistic about the future. We've had a lot more kids sign up. We're getting more tower staff this year than last year. It's a good sign. And I could speak for the members, stating that we're optimistic and we're looking forward to Director Malfer's direction in our plans moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. County Manager George Rectonwell?
Yes, Mr. Chair. First off, I wanted to thank everybody for working together. We had a very good negotiating team and the union team, and they had to wrestle with some difficult issues. Change is difficult, and change at the level that that division has had to go through can be crushing. And instead, they've taken and gone in the positive direction. I'm very happy to hear what the direction that they're taking, and they were getting more tower guards. I think we're moving everything in a direction that needs to go, and it wouldn't, I agree with Mr. Westine, and the impact that they have on people on a daily basis, there's not a day out there that they're not impacting people, and, of course, many cases, saving their lives. So, I'm very happy with this agreement, and I'm happy with the direction in which they're going, and I want to thank them because it has definitely been a difficult term and time for them, but they're handling it very well, and I think a big, bright future is in store for them out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana, anything? You're good? Okay. David Santiago.
Move to approve the agreement.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Santiago. Is there a second? Second by Matt Reinhardt. And I just want to say this, kind of a takeoff on what you said. Matt sits on the advertising board, and we spend a lot of money attracting people to our beaches. There are, in the course of your service, there, not just from you, but all of your colleagues, there are thousands of breaths being taken today that might not be. There's hearts that are beating that might not be. So, it's not a surprise to me when people remember to thank you for something 20 years ago. We pull more people out of rip currents and dangerous situations. You do a great job. Thank you. Please keep building. You know, tower guards are hard to find now, and we're doing about as best job as can be expected. I know you don't leave any pool undisturbed, looking for potential lifeguards, but thank you both. Please take that back to the troops from this council, that we appreciate your service. We have a motion to approve the contract by Councilman Santiago, second by Matt Reinhardt. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, five and six. That takes us to item seven, Resolution 2024, rezoning and planned unit development. And Clay, I will let you take it away.
Good morning, Claire. I'm Director of Growth and Resource Management. Before you today is a reversal of a PUD back to its original zoning to RR. This property was previously rezoned to PUD to allow for both a residential and a commercial nursery to operate. The original applicants did not follow through. The current applicant purchased the property and seeks only to build a single-family home, so therefore, the conditions established in the PUD would be eliminated, and we go back to the standard zoning of RR, which is rural residential, which is consistent with the land use. Your staff sent this forward to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission with a recommendation of approval at the PLDRC meeting. There was one who spoke in support of this, and otherwise, it's coming to you with unanimous recommendation of approval from the PLDRC, or Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, excuse me. Any questions for staff? We'll be glad to answer them.
Councilman Santiago.
Move to approve.
Councilman Santiago makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Danny Robbins.
Mr. Chair, before you vote, if there's any ex parte communications, you know, now would be the time to disclose it.
None.
None. We do have the applicant, if you would like to speak. Randall Marshall.
Yes, good morning. My name is Randall Marshall. I live in Orange City, Florida. I'm sure I can add much more than the gentleman presented to you already. I did buy this property, you know, 2021. It was an abandoned nursery. I bought it from the owner, who also owns the parcel to the north. I'm surrounded on this by R4 zonings and RR diagonally to the northwest, and then the current owner of the 10 acres is still the MPUD. MPUD is not anything that I need, and I'm seeking RR, which is less dense than the R4 that surrounds me. So, I'm really asking for less than I possibly could have asked. I'm familiar with that area. I live about a quarter mile from there myself. I like to see it keep as rural as it possibly can be. So, I'm requesting for a zoning for RR change. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve that request. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Item eight, special exception for a communication tower. Clay Irvin.
Good morning again, Claire, Director of Growth and Resource Management. The subject property is located on US 17, 1255 North US 17, near the town of Pearson. It is property owned by the CSX Railroad. There's, you know, a small sliver of land that is basically between the railroad and US 17 where the applicants are seeking to put a 255-foot-high cellular telephone tower. It's got capabilities for multiple antennas to be located on. Staff reviewed it for the criteria that are established in our code for towers exceeding 70 feet. It met all of those. There were variances that were submitted in regards to setbacks that the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission approved, subject to the county council approving this special exception, and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission did recommend it for approval. So, it's coming to you for approval from both your staff and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. If there's any questions for us, we'll be glad to answer them, and the applicant is available here.
Thank you. Councilman Santiago.
No ex parte from me, but I move to approve.
Councilman Santiago makes a motion to approve. The second is by Councilman Robbins. Is there anyone else that has any ex parte to declare?
None.
There being none. The applicant, Patton Hahn, is here, if you would like to speak.
Thank you, Councilman. Patton Hahn, 1901 Sixth Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama. I represent the applicant here today. I don't have much to add. The staff report indicates we met all the necessary requirements of your ordinance. The planning commission below recommended unanimously, and this is to improve coverage along that highway. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much for coming. All in favor of the special exception, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And that takes us to item nine. Clay Irvin, once again.
Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. This is amendment to our regulations that the county council directed staff to investigate. This is coming in regards to the criteria applied by staff in evaluating applications for variances that go through the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. There are currently five criteria, which applicants have to meet all five. Otherwise, staff is basically necessary to recommend denial. The council looked to see if we could do something to address that, so it's now down to three of the five. In other words, a majority of the criteria must be met. Also, there's an ability to address the date of the survey before it was, you know, costly to the applicants. With this change in regards to the survey requirements, it provides them with a greater opportunity. So, again, this is consistent with y'all's goals that you provided to staff, and we are bringing it forward based on your direction. If there's any questions, we'll be glad to answer them. Oh, and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission unanimously recommended approval.
Okay. Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Clay, thank you for making it easier to work with Volusia County government. I think that's this council's goals, and it still has many checks and balances within it. Mr. Chair, I move to approve.
Councilman Santiago makes a motion to approve, and it was seconded by Councilman Robbins. Any other discussion? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Moving right along. Item 10, fee schedule. And Aaron.
Good afternoon, council. Aaron Van Cleek, Deputy Finance Director. This item before you is for our updated fees for charges for services. This is in response to our internal audit last year, and also council's desire to have a more regulatory update to our fee schedule. So, we do have the fees listed out here in the presentation. We do have some fees that have already been updated, listed here for you. The beach access fees, mass transit fares are actually one of the next items. Ambulance fees, sewer water sales. For the fees that we are bringing in front of you, we have animal services. I'm not going to read every fee. You guys have already reviewed this. Fire services, mainly, the only fees being adjusted here at the training center, and it's for groups that come to use the training center, so a lot of municipalities, other counties. And then GRM for their Leonia Environmental Center, deals with a lot of their daily field trips and education programs. And then library services, the adjustment there is to non-resident library cards. Parks and Recreation, the only adjustment in the Parks and Recreation Division is to their new Veterans Memorial Plaza Park to set the rental fees for that plaza. And then Public Works, you have a CPI plus one up to an annual CPI plus one for the garbage and trash collection index, using the garbage and trash collection index, and to be adjusted January. All of the fees that presented are recommended for October 1st, with the exception of these that are January, so that municipalities will have the time to adjust their budgets to whatever the fee's being set at. And then the Ocean Center, there is not a list in the PowerPoint. The list was actually attached to the agenda item because there was too many fees to just list out. And in the Ocean Center, the main thing that they are trying to do is to create a more synergy through the fees that they're charging. Instead of individual parts and pieces, they have a more collective charge for the entire center, and then some more individual pricing as they have.
Ryan Osalski, CFO. I just want to clarify one thing. The January comment, we want to adjust it using the CPI index as of January. All these fees that we're looking at here would be effective October 1st, 2024, with the exception of the solid waste CPI. We would not be looking to have that effective for October 1st, 2024. That would not give time to the municipalities to adjust their waste hauler contracts. That one, we would use next January's data to do effective October 1st, 2025. I guess I'll finish it out from here, too. The departments are here. If you have any questions about any particular fees that were listed in the presentation to discuss, other than that, we won't take any questions.
Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. Ryan, do we have to accept this right now, or is this something we can do after the election to see which way this country is going?
The fee schedule changes are all at the discretion of county council. The changes that are listed here were developed in a parallel track with the budget, although the budget is prepared absent any of these fee changes. So, if they are not approved, this does not set us behind in our budget.
Okay. I'll save the rest for comments.
Are there any other questions? Then, there's not a motion yet. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, so we can open it up for discussion.
Okay. Matt Reinhardt makes a motion to approve.
I'll second it for discussion only.
Discussion, and Councilman Robbins makes that second for discussion. Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. Council, just real quick, reviewing all this, I don't have some of the problems with some of the areas that are addressed for non-visitors, or non-visitors, non-residents. Before we start putting on more fees, I would just ask this council to please consider, let's see what, if we can get this on after the election, or maybe in December. The last thing I want to do is, we're making a lot of cuts in the general fund. I want to see, a lot of our people are struggling. I don't want to see us tack on more and more and more fees when this economy is already heading in a bad direction. I don't want to put this burden, more burden, on the people if we don't have to. I could support something like this after the general election. It would make me feel a lot more comfortable, but I don't think I'd be game for it right
Councilman Johansson.
Yes, sir. I don't mind waiting, but I don't think an election in November is going to change the economy in December. So, although waiting might be in our best interest, I'm not sure that December is the right timeframe either. I'd like to discuss this a little bit and see how to move forward in the best interest of the county.
Thank you. Councilman Santiago.
So, we have a motion pending, don't we, Mr. Chair?
We do have a motion to approve, so we could vote it up or down, or amend it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just thinking for a second.
Sure.
I wonder if the sponsor of the motion would be willing to amend it to a time uncertain?
I would.
And the seconder?
Are you making that motion?
No, he made it. I just suggested it.
Okay. Okay. The motioner, Matt Reinhardt, and the seconder both agreed to move it to a time uncertain? Okay. And we'll, we need to discuss the motion before we vote on it. County Manager George Rectonwell?
Well, I may ask the council to consider looking at each of these sections individually. Many of the fees we're proposing here are not fees to the general public. You have fees for, for instance, the fire training center that are just between the fire departments of the county. Also, the Ocean Center, that's about, that's for people using the Ocean Center. That's the recommendation of our new director, who's making things happen over there, and again, you know, has the ability to package these things and to negotiate. But it would be good to have, I think, that in motion as soon as we can, so that we can work a little bit towards having the Ocean Center be more dependent on the events that are going on inside it rather than as dependent on the, some of the tourist taxes. are going on inside it, rather than as dependent on the, some of the tourist taxes. So if the council would entertain doing that, we could bring them up by section, and if there was something there that you guys wanted to defer to a later date, that might be okay. But again, we purposely worked through this, that most of these would be stuff that doesn't necessarily go to the general public. Most of them are between agencies or with businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Reinhardt.
I'd agree to that. There were some, and during our discussion, during our update, I saw jumps in quite a few that were concerning, but it was explained to me. For example, the Ocean Center, there were some fees there that I questioned, but I have the utmost faith in Ms. Flanders to be able to, be able to negotiate some of those, and I was very happy to hear that she has that ability to do just that. So for ones that are not affecting the public, I would like to hear one by one if that's, I don't know how to word that motion there.
We can...
Make it uncertain for...
Can I make a recommendation?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we have the motion already to table uncertain, maybe we can amend that and have staff just bring it back to the next meeting, which is just two weeks. The ones that we, he knows we want to hear and approve. It's just a two-week delay. Does that make sense? George? That we still table it, but bring back the inter-agency ones at the next council meeting?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
That's the world of council, that's, we'll have it...
And the other ones will just stay out there waiting?
I'll amend to that.
Tuesday night.
You don't...
Instead of going through every single one?
You don't need us to do that right now? Okay. All right. So the motion is amended, the amendment to a time uncertain, except for the specific non-resident fees that will come back in two weeks. Is that acceptable to everybody, that motion? Councilman Johansson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I don't want people to lose sight of the fact that every fee is paid for by the public who's hurting for the economy, right? If somebody's coming into the Ocean Center from out of town as an association, you know, take your pick, con, whatever that is, they want to come to the Ocean Center, we want them to come here. And like Mr. Reinhardt said, Ms. Flanders can negotiate that. She should have been given that ability early on anyhow. But raising fire department to fire department fees, if we charge New Smyrna Beach a little bit more to use our fire training facility, New Smyrna Beach has to pay for that somehow, and they pay for that with the adware and taxes. So let's not kid ourselves that we're not raising taxes, we're just not raising our taxes, right? So as we bring these things forward next week, we need to consider that. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't, because again, I had that sunrise metaphor. I don't want to ignore our infrastructure until we fall apart, like the condos did. I want to pay for what we should be paying for, and I want other people to pay for what they should be paying for. And I think the fire training facility is one of those. I'm sure between cities and the county, there's a little quid pro quo on things, and I leave that to George and staff to work out, and I would like to give them the ability to do that as well. But when we move forward to the portion next week, I just want everybody to consider that when we're making that decision. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. County Manager George Retumal?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think we're all cognizant of the fact that somebody is paying for it, and I didn't mean to come off to say that the public's not, at least indirectly, but a fee directs the usage. In other words, you know, we have, a lot of general government is tax-based, and then there are user fees, and that's what we have here before today. So it helps with maybe get the correct person or the correct entity paying for it versus maybe the general public at large. So that's really, you know, where fees kind of help us hone in on those who are using it are paying versus, you know, often, and often these things are subsidized, so there's that mix of, well, we lay down the base, we have a fire department that's paid for through our fire tax, and the training and certain elements of it are paid through the general fund because they affect the entire county. But then when the usage is very specific, you know, then the taxpayers of that particular municipality should be the ones paying for that particular service at that time. And again, good point with the Ocean Center, we're just, again, trying to have it less dependent on the taxes that are, the tourist taxes, and have it stand a little bit more on its own. And we think the value is out there. Again, we're not going to do anything to lose business, and in some cases, if you really look at what she's proposing there, a lot of it's packaging. So we're not nickel and diming, it's how they package it, which gives her a little bit better way to sell what's going on over there. So that's really what you're looking at there. And then some of the other items that were on the list, which we can bring back, were, again, in like the case of animal services, there were complaints really from the public, from the private sector, that maybe some of our services were now so low cost that it was hurting people, veterinarians and stuffs, who were actually trying to also compete and do those services. And then when it comes to the solid waste, we are embarking on an absolutely necessary large capital project that has to be funded correctly, and we'll be borrowing money as well to do that. So again, it's about being able to pay for that loan so that we can build a probably nearly $40 million new cell that is absolutely required.
Thank you. Councilman Robbins.
Yeah, and I think this will give us a little bit of opportunity to dig in on some of the ones that will be affecting more of our residents, like the garbage fees. We've raised some of the tipping fees, I want to say a year or two, go Chair, haven't been raised in 20 some odd years, we raised them. And what I don't want to do, that we've seen in recent events, and I'll use this new phrase, I don't want to tax our residents again, instead at no extra charge, because some of this stuff we do pay for in our taxes. And I want to use a couple of things as a model. So I think, given a little bit of time to identify those local, the things that'll affect the locals would be great. Thanks.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to table the majority of this to a time uncertain, but in two weeks, county staff will bring back certain categories that need to be dealt with more immediately. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries also six to zero. Item 11, Consideration of Changes to Votran Fares. Janine and Bobby King.
Good morning, Bobby King, Volusia County Transit Services Division Director. And I'm here to present a discussion item about a continuation from our May discussion of fares for Votran and Voh Ride. Real quick, we're going to go through a very short PowerPoint presentation, something that I have to do to meet the regulations of our federal requirement for Title VI. So we did six across-the-county public meetings and a few virtuals as well, and we did receive a few comments in those meetings, as well as via email or from bus cards that our writers provided. And for the most part, most of the fee increases were supportive. Obviously, we had lots more discussion about the pair transit rate than any other discussion. So just to remind you what we discussed as possible rate increases in May, the only difference that I'm presenting today is the pair transit gold service rate. We can go up to $4. We're allowed to do double what the fixed route rate is, which will be $2 if approved today, but we don't have to go to $4. And that is, if we go a whole dollar, that's a 33 and 1/3% increase. All the other rates up here are less than 15% or somewhere around 15% or less for the increases. And you can see they're very minimal increases, so my recommendation would be to do 350 at this point. We can always address another increase at a later date. I'm going to move on and let you ask me some questions in a slide or two. So the Voh Ride rates are a little bit different. So we charge $2 for one-way trip, and right now it's up to eight miles. We are having a lot of interest in Voh Ride, and so we want to make sure that we continue to provide good service there, the availability of rides, and we've been working with our contractor to look at ways to, you know, spread it out a little bit, maybe include another vehicle or two, but we're all, we're staying within our budget. And so their biggest suggestion was eliminate long trips. And so we do do a free transfer to the bus, and so those opportunities are still very much available, but we're recommending that we limit the $2 one-way fare to five miles. So if you want a ride that's going to take you longer than five miles, we're recommending an additional dollar per mile up to 10 miles, which would be a $7 rate. And so that's our recommendation right now. So we want to, if approved today, make these rates effective January 1, with the exception of the Voh Ride. And we're requesting that you allow us to make those effective as soon as possible so that we can incorporate more volume, more ability to provide the rides. And that's my presentation.
Okay. Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need you to refresh my memory on the Voh Ride. That could also take, I think you mentioned also to the bus, you call it, to the bus. But that's, the bus is only in certain locations, much less than what it used to be. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's like a hub?
Right. We consider them our main lines, and those are still in place through, straight through Deland all the way to DeBarry, and then there's another line or two out in the Deltona area.
Not the old lines that it used to be, not those stops?
Right. Not as many, right.
And follow-up question to that, and I probably should have asked this back then, but it just rang a bell. What are we doing with the bus stops that we're not using?
So we are going to be removing some bus stops.
And there's some private companies that have benches there, too. Have they been notified?
We haven't gotten to that step yet. We wanted to make sure that the Voh Ride was running properly, we want to make sure that there's no chance of going back to a fixed route line in those areas. So we still need just a little bit more time, but yes, we would work with each of the city's contractors that have advertising on the shelters or bus benches, including our own. So yeah, we will take those steps when we need to.
Thank you. And you do a good job of what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Dempsey.
Have you guys ever looked at what the private sector taxi cab, Uber, Lyft charges for the same 10-mile trip?
So I did, actually. I took, talked to a local taxi cab provider, and 10-mile trip would be $12 to $14, depending upon whether it's in town or out of town.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move to approve as presented by staff.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Robbins, and the motion is to approve the Voh Ride immediately and all others January 1? Okay. David Santiago.
Oh, no, I already did.
Okay. Councilman Don Dempsey.
We're in discussion.
Questions or discussion, whatever you...
As far as Voh Ride goes, I've been contacted by a local private taxi cab company, and it's only inevitable that we're going to run them out of business. I mean, how can they compete, charging $12 to $14 for a cab ride when the government, who they pay taxes to, is only charging $2, $3, $4, $5? I mean, just like George said, when we offer these cut-price veterinarian services that the private sector vets are having to compete with the government. I mean, really, veterinarian services are not a government function. Providing a taxi cab is not a government function. It's a losing, it's a subsidized venture. I think the government has, straight-line buses are one thing, because they've been here historically for decades, I shouldn't say it, not centuries. But as far as cab services, and we are directly snuffing out Lyft, Uber, and these private cab companies locally, I think it's already in. I voted against it, but at the very least, we should be charging the exact same as the private sector, so that we're not going to put them out of business. I mean, it's one thing to compete with them, it's another thing to undercut their prices by potentially, you know, twofold, threefold, whatever. How, we're trying to create jobs. We all talk about how bad the economy is, how bad the fiscal cliff is that might be coming after the election, and yet here we are, using their own tax dollars to snuff them out. I'm totally against this, but we should be at least charging the same, if not more, in the private sector. So I'm a no on this.
I would like to address that, if you don't mind. So the Voh Ride service is not always a door-to-door service. It's only a door-to-door service for folks that absolutely need it, and they have to, they have to request that special service. Otherwise, it's a walk to a block, sometimes maybe two, and I do hear complaints about that. They may be willing to pay that additional fee versus a Voh Ride vehicle.
Bobby, what is the name of the private company that provides this service?
Well, I know Primo Taxi does services.
No, that we contract.
Oh, ours, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Via is our contractor.
And they are a private outfit that bid on this contract, correct?
Correct.
Just like the contractors that build our roads and do the work for us, they bid on it competitively. These people bid on this, and they are a private sector provider themselves.
Correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Janine.
I'd also just like to add that, because we have had a lot of conversations with the private taxi cab services, because there is a segment within transit that we do have a taxi cab contract for. And we encourage a lot of the people who have taxi services to actually bid on that, because it fits a little bit more closely into their normal realm of business. The other thing is, it's the restricted hours, whereas a taxi cab, you can take, you know, all the way up into the evening, and I think one of the comments we got back was, your timeframe doesn't kind of mesh with what our timeframe is. They do a lot of evening-type of taxi rides, and we're shut down by that time on Voh Ride.
Thank you. Councilman Johansson.
Thank you, sir. This is more of a question for Bobby or Janine. Do we, or have we ever had a voucher system for taxis, like instead of $7 for Voh Ride?
We don't have that service in place. I do know of some agencies in Florida that do supplement such rides, but instead, we have, we have taxi cab service on our contract, and we can help people through that service.
So in the limited research I've done, Mr. Dempsey, I think, I think a voucher for Uber is cheaper than a bus, but more expensive right now than Voh Ride. So where do you, where do you, where do you draw the line? Do you want the individual to pay a little bit more to get there, to help the Uber drivers, or the private agencies, of which Via is one of? Or do we, or do we save the money and use Voh Ride? It's... It's, I, I see both working. We chose Voo Ride and Via, but, um, I, I do see your point with competition with private and, and, um, and like George said, Via is private. So, uh, I like the balance right now because Voo Ride doesn't work all the time. And, uh, and Uber and taxis go door-to-door, which Voo Ride doesn't. So, um, I, I, as a, a user, although no to that concerned citizen out there, I don't use it because it's not for me. That's not what it's there for. I see it given, given opportunity and choices for, for our folks. And, and the, the fact that we can give choices is, uh, is good for me. And the fact that we can, we can serve people that might not be able to afford a door-to-door service, the ability to walk, uh, get a Voo Ride, catch the bus, and, and head to Walmart or wherever they need to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dempsey.
Well, let me, just the million-dollar question is, is this running, is this covering itself? Or is this gonna be coming to council for subsidies?
So all of our services are subsidized by government, federal, state dollars.
Okay, so the Voo Ride is not running, it's not breaking even. It's losing money. It's like Sunrail on wheels, basically. And so we're just creating another form of transportation that the taxpayers are gonna have to subsidize and keep subsidizing just because we can give them a $2 cab ride instead of a $12 private market. And just, I guess, to kind of contrary what George says, um, that's not, because we had people bid on this, that's not a free market. That is not capitalism. I mean, if we have every private business have to bid and work for the government, that's not free enterprise. That's not laissez-faire. That's not capitalism. It, it's not. We need Lyft and Uber and Primo or whoever else to be able to compete and offer a quality service for a cheaper price. And how are they expected remotely to compete with this? I, I, I think this is terrible that the government is getting into another subsidized mode of transportation. It's just gonna cost the taxpayers more and more money. And I'm just, I'm against it. And the last thing we should be doing is offer underbidding prices. It's gonna just wipe out the private sector. This is terrible, guys.
Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. Don, I hear ya. Staff, is there, is there a point in time, maybe in the next coming months, where we can review this to see what kind of other, Don, economic impacts that this may have caused or secondary and third effects? How, how long have we been doing this so far?
Uh, we've been doing it since December, so nine months, almost nine months. I would like to say that we implemented this service to kind of eliminate some of our fixed route that was costing us a lot more money to operate. And so we want to still provide service to those folks that needed it. And this is a, a, a less expensive for us to operate service. So that was the whole.
And I, and I understand, I know there was a pretty good savings in there. But, um, you know, at the end of the day, Don, I, I would be open to see exactly, you know, maybe we'll just give this a year, uh, or at month nine, and let's look at it. You know, the best thing we can do is sit down and look at it. And I may, I may go your way because we can always, if there's deadbeat routes that just don't make sense to have, you cut them and eliminate them. And, and that's just it. But if this is having other effects, to give your people an opportunity, if that's what they're, they're saying, I, I'd most certainly want to.
Aim is a result of you asking us to look at VooTran.
Absolutely.
And, uh, and I can't even say how many times I heard the complaint of big giant empty buses, big giant empty buses. So we went to a smaller vehicle, which is, these are little vans, if you've seen them, they're little minivans. And, uh, so that's a much smaller vehicle. And, and again, we went, we competed, uh, went out to a company that, uh, that bid on it and provides that service. So, uh, but we'll, certainly we'll look at it and continue. Actually, they, the idea, I think where they were going was also to look at the east side. We started this on the west side, but we'll be looking at it on the east. And keep a backbone bus service, but eliminate some of these routes as we just did this year. On the west side, get rid of the big empty buses.
Correct, and, and I agree with you, County Manager. I'm not saying which way, go one way or the other, but I, I kind of brought this, a lot of this forward. And I think it's been doing a good job.
Well, we'll make it, like I say, part of that upcoming, uh, you know, we can start again in January. We'll be doing the budget all over again, and it'd be a great time to review this.
That's all I'm asking, just.
And that'll give you the 12 months of, of service on this side.
Don, you good, we review this? I don't want to catch a rock over here.
I'm still against it. I mean, it's, comparing, George, I mean, I, I understand we have problems with the mainline buses being empty. But mainline buses and taxi cab companies and Uber don't compete against each other directly. That's, I think, apples and oranges. But Voo Ride and Uber and Lyft, that is apples to apples. And I, you know, and bus lines have been around for decades. Uber and Lyft and cab, this cab company have only been around, um, more recently. So when they opened, when they decided to capitalize their businesses, when they decided to go down this line of work for their livelihood, they already knew going in they're competing with bus lines. But now they're having to compete direct, directly house-to-location transportation. They are directly competing with them with an unfair competition. It's not fair to expect them to price-point their stuff and they, they get down to $12, let's say, the cheapest. How do they compete with a government-subsidized program? That's like me trying to open up a railroad. You know what? I think I'm gonna open up my own railroad to go down to OIA from Deland. How am I gonna compete against something that's subsidized? That's not fair. That's really unfair. That's why I want, if we're gonna compete with them, we should at least have the same rates as them. That's why I just, I don't think this is right.
Okay, here's, here's my question, uh, Don. It is, public transportation a core government responsibility? That's kind of what you're, what we're discussing here. And is it, um, is it the same market? Or are there two different markets? Are there people who will call Uber or Lyft because they can afford it? Because they don't want to, um, ride with other people? They want to get somewhere faster, door-to-door? And is Voo Ride, VooTran, is it a completely different market of people that just can't afford that? Older people, younger people that are getting to, uh, to work or, um, to the doctor's appointment? Is it the same market? And, and, but I guess the real question is, is it a core responsibility of, of county government to provide public transportation?
Is that a question to me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, well, door-to-door pickup? No, I don't think so. It never has been. I don't know what cab service was around 100 years ago or what public transportation has been, you know, more than 100 years. I mean, it's not, come on, guys. I mean, we're directly competing with them. And somehow we've made it this far. I, I just, I don't understand why we're just, we're gonna put them out of business. I mean, if I had to compete in my business with somebody charging, you know, a third or a sixth of what I charge, I mean, come on, it's just a matter of time. You're just gonna put them all out, and we'll all be working for the government. You know, and there's, there's a term for that, when everybody works for the government in some form. I mean, we're supposed to be capitalists. We're supposed to have a free market and let the better product win. And I, that's why I just, I think this is going too far. And I think the price point should at least be at the same rate as the competition.
Okay, so it sounds like we agree that public transportation is a core government responsibility. You, you don't see this as that, though. You think it's just direct.
I don't think it's a government responsibility to provide door-to-door transportation.
Okay. How much door-to-door do you do? And how much of that is handicapped, special needs?
So we, um, probably 250,000 rides a year for door-to-door service, for paratransit service.
How many?
250,000 rides a year.
Wow.
That, that's what I said, that's what I said. Oh, you're talking about Voo Ride? So it's about 2,000, it's not door-to-door. It's a very small percentage of the 2,000 trips a week that Voo Ride is providing for door-to-door or wheelchair-accessible needs. Very small percentage.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Johansson.
And sir, I'm, of course, I'm, I'm not using it again. But I would hope that the general public in Volusia County doesn't abuse the privilege of Voo Ride by taking it just because it's there. I would never, on the west side, consider looking at my wife after a cocktail or two and going, hey, they got Voo Ride over here. Let, let's take that and abuse that. It's only seven bucks.
Would have to be a daytime cocktail, too.
And, and it would be. We have lunch in an hour and 15 minutes. So I'm hoping that, that, that people, like, like you don't want anything subsidized. That's a hope. That's a dream in government, but a good dream. I hope that people don't abuse Voo Ride. I'm gonna take Uber. I'm gonna take Lyft. I'm gonna take a taxi. I know Voo Ride exists. I would never consider taking it because there's people who need it. If I take it, it's not available for them. So, um, and, and the, I have this distinct feeling that everybody save one, maybe that tests the system. I have a feeling that people that need it know about it. And the people that don't need it either know about it and don't care, or don't care. Just like the bus. I know the bus exists. I've got on the bus once to say I did it, and that was it.
I just want to share a, a quick thing. If you're, if you do the app and you get a, you actually get a proposal for your trip. And a lot of times it is a proposal that includes a transfer to the bus.
Right.
And that shuts down a lot of our users.
Sure.
And again, I said, this is for our transit-using public, and they're familiar with using the bus, and they have no problem with that. But some folks don't want that transfer to the bus. And so if you're living outside of the bus zones, you can utilize this for, for a trip. Much-needed service in areas that we don't have, we don't have bus. But a lot of times it will, it will deter somebody if they see that they have to transfer to the bus.
So in, in the big scheme of things, I would love to get out of the subsidized everything business. I really would. It's, it's a great dream to have and something we fight for. I believe that Voo Ride, by the way, is a step in the right direction because we were subsidizing big buses with nobody on them, or one or two people on them. And those people are using Voo Ride now. So instead of using a, a big bus and hiding the, uh, hiding the fact that we're not using a taxi, we're using a little Voo Ride car, and now it's become more apparent. So, so I think it's a good step. I think we need to continue, uh, on in this direction to, to work harder. And we're doing this in, in, in every, uh, general fund, uh, area, trying to decrease the subsidizing of people who are enjoying government dollars. So, so this is a good step. I, I like it. It, it makes us more, this makes us more competitive right now with, with Uber and Lyft somewhat. And, and I'm, I'm leaning toward supporting it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just point of order?
Yes, what is your point?
Uh, I just want to, if you can, if the chair can tell us what posture are we in right now? Are we in debate posture?
That, that's what I was just gonna do before I called on Don because we've, uh, I've been pretty generous with time. But Don, you've been brief each time that you spoke. And part of the time you spoke is because I asked you a direct question.
Right, that's why I was.
So I don't, so, um, we never really did move from questions to debate. You're up again. Do you have a question?
A question for, yeah, Bobby, if I could. First of all, Jeff, you seem to allude that, um, basically this was cutting into paratran. Paratransit was around way before Voo Ride, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so by me being against Voo Ride, it's not ipso facto saying, oh, Don's against paratransit.
Yeah, and I didn't mean it that way.
Okay, yeah, because obviously the handicap, they need help from the government, and I get that, and I support that. But, um, in fact, we, we are having problems with a lack of paratransit transportation, correct?
Right.
And instead of using this for paratransit, we're using it for other things.
That's, that's actually the benefit of Voo Ride as well. Some of those folks have moved to the Voo Ride service instead of our paratransit service. If they didn't need door-to-door service all this time, and they could walk to the curb, and they need a quick ride to the grocery store or to the doctor, they've transferred to this service instead because they don't have to call ahead, days ahead to schedule a paratransit trip like, like all of our paratransit riders do. They can get one within a few minutes.
Okay, but, and then, secondly, Jeff was saying, or the, the chair was saying that, um, you know, it's just, and Jake was saying he hopes that certain people will, will not abuse it. But this is not income-related. Anybody, you know, Bill Gates could come down here and take a Voo Ride, just like he could do Primo. Okay. Alright, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
No, I, I understand your point. I, I think for me, the question is, is public transportation a core responsibility of local government? I, I happen, I, I think that it, that it is. And I think the reason we've gone to Voo Ride is because of what Jake has said. This council has given direction to cut costs and to make it more efficient. And, and Voo Ride has done that. I, I've spent a lot of time outside recently, and I see the big buses go by, and there isn't anybody on them, I mean, nobody, at peak hours. And then I see a Voo Ride go by, and it has three people in it. So I, I think it's serving the, uh, uh, the purpose, and it's reduced our cost as, which is what the, the policy that this council said, so. I understand your, your, uh, your concern, Don, and, and I agree with you. I agree with Jake, Jake said I wish we could get rid of all subsidized, you know, whether it's Sunrail or, but it's, it's a public service that has, up until now anyway, been a core government responsibility. Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. Something that was brought up just a second ago, Bobby, when you, when the question was asked by Mr. Dempsey, and thank you for bringing it up, is the fact that we do lack in paratransit transport with respect to, to VooTran Gold. And that many of those paratransit individuals are choosing Voo Ride. Not all of them can because those Voo Ride vehicles are not set up for many of them. Individual in a wheelchair, for example, will not be able to utilize Voo Ride because the vehicles are not designed for that. They're not, and I knew the answer to that, but I did want to bring some clarity to it for individuals that are listening, that, and also those drivers of, for the paratransit buses, there's a different training setup for them as well, correct?
Right, those, um, the paratransit drivers need to know how to strap down wheelchairs, and, um, of course, they assist people to and from their door, to and from medical appointments. I do want to clarify, Voo Ride does have some wheelchair-accessible vehicles.
They do have some now? Okay, well, that's good.
They're much smaller than our vehicles, and so if you get one, one person in there, you're.
Then you've eliminated it for someone else?
Yeah.
Okay, and I know that we have a very large paratransit community in the east side of the county as well. So I'll just point that out for Claire. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor to approve, uh, Voo Ride immediately. All others, January 1st. I don't know where we are. So Carissa, I'm gonna ask you to call the roll.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Dempsey?
No.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes, so the motion carries five to one, uh, good arguments. Don, it's a, it is a, indeed, an area of concern. Yes. And it'll be revisited, um, next year. Item 12, to Volusia County Consumer Appointments to the Health Planning Council of Northeast. Item 12, to Volusia County Consumer Appointments to the Health Planning Council of Northeast Florida.
Correct. Two of the applicants, their term is up on October 1st. We've only received an applicant from, an application from one of the incumbents. That's Ms. Carrie Baird, and her application is before you for reappointment. If we do get the second application, we will bring her back as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Reinhardt?
I'd like to nominate Carrie Baird for reappointment.
Second, Johansson.
Okay. Matt Reinhardt nominates Carrie Baird. The second was by Jake Johansson. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Carrie is appointed, and we hope to get another one soon. Item 13, one appointment to the Housing Finance Authority.
Correct. Mr. John Adams resigned in December. And we have one application of Derek Mears for this board as well.
Move to approve Derek Mears as a board member.
Councilman Johansson nominates Derek, what was the last name?
Mears.
Mears.
Mears. And the second was by Councilman Santiago. Discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Derek is approved, six to zero.
Next, we do have the appointments to the EnRAC board. We only have 13 applicants for 14 positions. And there is a specific nominating order for this, where the Chair will nominate first with the at-large member being second. And then we will go through the districts one through five, and then we will reverse that, five to one, at-large and Chair.
Okay. We have a question from David Santiago.
Remind me when they, thank you, Mr. Chair, when they expire?
I believe it's September 31st, if you give me, 30th, September 30th.
You knew I was gonna call you up, Clay. That's why he smiled. Psychic also. Mr. Chair, if I can ask a staff question?
Yes.
Clay, can you, can you give the council an update? I remember, I don't know, maybe 10 months ago or so, approximately, we gave some direction to narrow the scope of work that EnRAC was working on, to try to kind of, I think the intent, I think it might have been discussed to bring that committee into a landing, focused landing with some specific task. How far along are we on that?
Pretty far. And just to reiterate, what we heard several months ago, Tad led a lot of that discussion, so he is able to provide the technical expertise to the group. So we're proceeding on, and now we're looking at trying to wrap up some of the items that were left previously pertaining to wetlands, tree preservation, and those things. Ginger, Derek, and County, give you, if you have any specific detailed questions, because she's been leading the discussion on the other items other than the stormwater.
So I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I want to make sure I think I understood what you said. The focus, the narrow focus that we put them on has been accomplished. Is that what you said? And now we're doing other stuff?
I would say that the presentation by Development Engineering on our stormwater has been completed.
Okay. Mr. Chair and councilmembers, there was a lot of debate about, you know, this, how far along do we want to continue with this board and, you know, what it's focused on? So I'm glad they've gotten, it sounds like they've gotten the work done that we have refocused them on.
I do have to point out tomorrow, Ginger just let me know, is tomorrow's a final discussion or working towards the final discussion on the Low Impact Development Handbook and Manual, and going forward with the ordinance changes for that.
So I'm a little reluctant to appoint, because I think the intent of the council, at least the majority of the council at that time, was to bring this board into a closure. And I think we're there. I'm prepared to let the terms expire until we need to reactivate them to anything specific. I say mission accomplished. I'll leave it there for now, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Councilman Robbins?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Irvin? Just so I understand where we're at, the focus, was that on adding regulations or getting rid of maybe regulations?
It was improving some, in some situ-, I mean, in all reality, there's going to be situations where there are some antiquated requirements that need to be removed, things that are, could have been mandated by state or federal level, or identified issues that our staff has caught to make changes to the code to improve it.
Now, is those updates that are state and federal, is that something that we can do without this board, since we have to update them anyway? I mean, do we need the board to, if we're mandated to do them, do we need the board going through and say, "Yep, we're mandated"? Or is that something we can do?
EnRAC was created by the council in 2022, and there was a long, very detailed worklist. If y'all feel that you don't, EnRAC doing that and want to take the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, going to be a requirement, that's your call.
Okay.
EnRAC was, again, created by the council to focus on these very specific changes and concerns that were identified back in 2022. The issue that Mr. Santiago was, we heard loud and clear, you wanted us to stop what we were doing, and at that time, pause it, look at stormwater. They've completed their review of our stormwater regs. And so now they're trying to pick back up and finish up with the low-impact development, some of the changes that could have been to the wetlands and some of the tree preservation.
Where did we land, just refresh with the low-impact development? That was pretty much just give recommendations or...
The direction from County Council was to come back with an ordinance that allowed that to be utilized voluntary option to our traditional management requirements.
Okay, not a big deal. Okay, yeah, David, I think, I see where you're going here. If we've accomplished a lot of this, a lot of this stuff, I could be open to what you're saying.
Councilman Reinhardt?
Thank you, Chair. So my understanding, though, I don't know if I'm on board with that. And the reason being, as you just said, that they stopped work on issues with respect to wetlands, trees, other things, in order to work on stormwater, so that other stuff got put on hold. So they have not completed the mission or the task assigned to them, correct?
There are some things that they've worked, well, again, I have to reference the list that was presented to the then-sitting council for us to mention from. So if y'all don't want that prior list to be addressed by EnRAC, and just the work they've done up to this point, which is, again, low-impact development was the number-one priority.
Yep.
Then we started working through the tree preservation standards.
And all that got put on hold.
Well, we've gotten through a majority of it. We just haven't wrapped up the final recommendations with them.
And that would, if we did that, that would put more of a workload on the PLRDC as well.
Well, everything that they talk about changing in the code would have to go through the Planning and Land Development.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Ginger? Just for, we're still in question mode, I think. All these terms expire this month, end of this month?
Correct. Ginger, Environmental Management Director, yes. The terms expire September 30th of this month.
So that gives you one meeting?
We have a meeting tomorrow.
To complete everything.
Finish up on low-impact development, design, manual, code changes, that sort of thing.
I don't think that's enough time, is it?
It's really up to the council about if you want the committee to continue looking at the original work plan. So on the original work plan, we're all of the environmental minimum standards. The tree minimum standard, wetlands, stormwater. We added low-impact development because we had that grant from the Department of Economic Opportunity. And, you know, any of the other environmental minimum standards. If the council wants the committee to continue to review those, that is up to you. If you have changes that you're interested in, for instance, here's a change. Our wetland code is 30 years old. It references mitigation in a way that we don't do mitigation anymore, and we're not allowed to do it that way based on state law. So the staff can certainly bring forward changes for consideration to the council, to the PLDRC. If you'd like to handle things in that way, there just are changes that are overdue. Doesn't take a committee to come up with those things. The point of the committee, I think, at the time the council created it, was to get input from all of those different sectors of, you know, of our county. But it's not the only way to do it. So there's still work to be done, but it doesn't necessarily require a committee to do it. And that's really a policy decision. We'll do it however you all direct us to do it.
Okay. I think it's, it's been a hard task for that committee. Their meetings are long, what, three or four hours apiece? These are all people, you know, professional people. But I think it's really important and helpful to get the advice and the information from this committee. I would be more, I think it needs to continue. What I would say is let the committee tell us when they think they are done. It could be in two meetings, it could be in six meetings, it could be a whole 'nother year. But I'm not in favor of abandoning it at this point. I've waited several years to have low-impact development discussed and recommended. And we had it kind of shut down because of some state law interfering with it. And now that state law is not there. So I would like them to continue to discuss it. We've got three people on the board. Is this all for questions still? No? No question? You have a question? Let's finish. Questions, Jake Johansson?
Ginger, can, you have this great committee of professionals. If we did disband them, I'd imagine they'd keep their same phone numbers, and you'd have access to them to ask them questions or their opinions, correct? We have professors, environmentalists, and there's even people that I respect environmentally that don't have time to be on the committee, but I imagine you chat with them as well. So how hard will that be for you, should we disband the EnRAC?
We certainly have those contacts. And anytime we propose a change to ordinances or policies, we reach out to the community. So we regularly interface with the environmental community. We go to VCard if we have something new. We go to the Building Industry Association. So we do that regardless of if we have this.
And if we don't, they show up on Tuesday.
They'll be here.
So, and so, yeah, I think those people are still gonna be there for us. My question to you is, I know you have some wrap-up stuff at a meeting tomorrow, and this, should this happen right now, it would be a shock to everybody. Do you think you could, if you had to wrap up, that you could wrap up all the loose ends by the end of the year, in January 1st, go to, as I've tried with other committees, go to some ad hoc, non-outside-the-structure-of-sunshine, so people can chat and be flexible and have meetings outside sunshine where they can discuss things and bring them to you? Do you think you could do that by January 1st?
Certainly.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Chairman?
Okay. Councilman Robbins, do you have a question, or are you ready for debate?
Debate.
Okay. I have one more question, probably for Ginger. There's 14 members.
Yes, sir.
13 have reapplied.
Yes, sir.
That means 13 are willing to serve again and feel like they have the time. Who, there's...
Well, it's actually 11 have reapplied. We have two new applications. So if you appointed everybody that's on your list today, it would be two people that haven't been on the committee before. There'd still be one vacancy.
Who is the vacancy? Who did not reapply?
Yeah, two people chose not to reapply, Alex and Suzanne Schyber.
Okay.
But, yeah, Mr. Hoblick, originally in the agenda item, he was misstated as not reapplying. He is, in fact, reapplying.
Okay.
In addition, because Mr. Kent isn't here today, that also, he wouldn't be appointing his two people, which means one of the individuals from today wouldn't get appointed. And then I would assume that Mr. Kent would have the vacancy if one of you chose to, if all of you chose to appoint somebody.
Okay, then perhaps we need to let them have their meeting tomorrow and bring this back the next meeting so that we're all here, because...
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We, we're missing another council member as well. I don't know if he's coming back. Did anybody know if Don Dempsey had to, okay?
He's coming back?
Okay. Somebody said they had a question.
I did, yes, yes, sir.
Councilman Reinhardt?
Thank you.
And there he is.
Well, no, he's not. He was here, he's gone. I'm not a big advocate of kicking the can down the road, but I also know that you just brought up a good point with respect to Mr. Kent, and two of the assignments are from him. How much impact would it be to address this in the next meeting when Mr. Kent is here? Plus, I mean, if we're talking, I mean, when this was first put on the agenda, it was about the reappointments. I see Professor, she's here, but that's the only one from EnRAC that I see here that, if given the opportunity, also, they're aware of the fact that we may very well be disbanding this group, in all fairness to them, that they would be here. Is it, would they entertain the idea that we address this at the next meeting?
Well, we don't have a motion yet, so you can make a...
So I'd like to make that motion.
To table this to the next...
To the next meeting and allow Mr. Kent to be here as well as anybody else, if that's what we're talking about doing, disbanding it, because it was advertised for reappointments. It wasn't advertised for the possible disbanding of this.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table this to the next meeting so that all the council can be here. Is there a second to that motion? No second? If there's no second, then the motion dies on the floor. I think it's a good motion.
I'm up next, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you are. David Santiago?
Thank you. Matt, you know, I appreciate where your motion came from. It came from a good place. I respected it. I also have mixed feelings, well, not mixed, but I think we ought to get out of the business of the council members missing that we don't act our, our, our direction and our causes. If we have a quorum, we work. And I don't think we should, you know, put off anything that we have to do. That doesn't mean we can't ask for it. I get it. I just, I stand against, you know, those types of, that premise of work. As far as the committee, on this, and making a vote if people are not here, the council is an open, sunshine, public business. I think, I think I've expressed this opinion in the past. If the meeting is noticed, and we're not violating any type of required notices of things, this is not an ordinance or something like that, we're here to take care of business. And if something comes up, somebody makes a motion, if it's within our purview to make a decision, I think we should make decisions. And we live with those decisions. We don't govern by committee. We're the decision-makers. When it comes to EnRAC, I appreciate the work they've done. I think I complimented them at the last time when we kind of narrowed their focus to that, because I think, if I'm recalling the debate from last time, it was really all over the place with what I was getting. It was, I didn't see any real successes coming from it. So we channeled it to something that was a high priority. I think, Mr. Chair, you have often said that flooding is one of our biggest priorities. And it sounds like staff said they did the work. We don't need additional layers of government. Staff has made it very clear. We all know we have the PLDRC, which is made up of professionals also, that we qualify, and we appoint them based on what they bring to the table. So there is a layer of public participation and guidance that's already mandated by statute. We have it. Let's stop creating additional layers of government. Don, we talked about, you know, you made a compelling argument, and you almost had me there, but this is another layer of government, and there's a cost to it. I know we're not, anytime staff is spending three and four hours in a meeting, there's payroll staff time to that, the prep time for that. We already have one layer. Let's not continue the additional layers. But I think, Jake, I would support your suggestion of let them go through the end of the year, wrap up any loose ends that they have, and submit their work. wrap up any loose ends that they have and submit their work, and thank you. And if we need you again, we'll reengage you. But at the meet... This particular time, we have PLDRC. Let's stop creating layers of government, guys. I came here to reduce the size of government in a reasonable way, and there's plenty of checks in balance. And, Mr. Chair, I think you said, the word you said, you don't want to abandon low-impact development. Neither do I. And I don't think this committee going away impacts low-impact development. I want 31st, 2024.
Second, Johansson.
Okay, the motion is to table this and to extend... I'm going to have, I'm going to ask the attorney in a minute if this is...
Table the appointments.
Do it this way, to table the appointments and, but to extend their time of service until...
December 31st.
December 31st of this year. Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay. And Jake Johansson, you made a second?
I did.
Okay. I know we're done with questions. Councilman Robbins and Councilman Johansson are still on. One more question for Ginger. I don't remember, did we get a report on flooding? Is flooding solved?
No, sir. What happened was development engineering staff spent a couple of meetings, you know, because every meeting is a try-to-understand-the-issue meeting and education of the committee. And then they did make recommendations to your development engineering staff about some code changes. The staff is now taking those recommendations and going to bring forward actual language for consideration. So you haven't had that report yet because that was just at the last EnRAC meeting. We've brought forward recommendations on low-impact development, that's what we've been implementing, and that, we will finish that up tomorrow. And then they've made significant progress on the tree removal issue, which is initially why the committee was established. If you recall, there was quite a bit of uproar in the community about trees. And they've also gotten pretty far through wetland ordinance. So those are the things that I think we could get to you by the end of this year. LID, stormwater regulations, trees and wetlands.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. David, I think you're on point. You know, as long as, I know for me, as long as we are reducing some of these layers of bureaucracy and not having as much overlap, I think we're headed in a better direction. But, you know, we have, I think we have to remember, we have higher standards. Just because it says minimal standard or minimum standards, that doesn't mean minimal. We do have higher standards than a lot of state and federal regulations out there. So I think that's important. But in 2022, just a little historical on it and some of the things, Matt, why we did switch gears, is because at one point, we had about a six-inch proposal of new regulations on top of our already standards. Council's changed, but the council changed, I think 80% of the council, it changed, as did the direction of the new council, say, hey, we want less, 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 less. So that's a little history on that. But I think Mr. Johansson's recommendation of giving time till the first of the year is smart. And things could change. I mean, this is not necessarily final, but things can change in between now and then or an issue can come up. But I think we've addressed some of the concerns or all the concerns, and we just heard confirmation that it'd be done. So, thanks.
Councilman Dempsey.
I just want to make sure I'm clear that we're just talking about extending this current board. We're not voting out the board.
Correct. We're extending it till...
Right.
We're extending it till December.
And we retable the new appointments or have this up for discussion again when Troy's here.
I think the motion on the table is that in December 1st, they all go away.
With no discussion about whether we're... This is actually a vote to end it, then? Yes. Okay, yeah, because just like I've said before, I mean, you know, I'm against ending this because I think there's nothing more powerful than a volunteer who wants to get involved in his community. And, you know, we've got some heavy hitters here. I mean, looking at these applicants, I mean, Wendy Anderson, Bob Fitzsimmons, I mean, these are... We've got an architect, we've got a farmer, we've got a lawyer, civil engineer. I mean, we've got some pretty heavy hitters. And to just sit there and tell them, well, we don't care what you guys have to say, you know, we're going to do whatever we want. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a consultant, I'm not a builder, I'm not, you know, an environmental expert like Ms. Anderson. It's just, I think to sit there and not listen to what they have to say, I think there's the old saying, there's safety in the multitude of counsel. We need these people to maybe offer better ideas later on. And to just sit here and say, ah, we don't need you, we're smart, we'll take care of it, I think is wrong. I mean, I think we need to give them a unified platform to be able to debate from and give us a report. Same reason we have the PLDRC, we have these other organizations. I think what they do is important, and the fact that they're volunteering, I mean, sure that these guys have a full dance card and they've got a lot of other stuff they could be doing, it's probably more important to them, family and business and all that. They're donating their time and their expertise to help the benefit of the community. So I don't think we should be getting rid of these people at all. I think we need to keep them in place and hear them out. And so I'm a no for disbanding this.
Thank you. You just saved me five minutes. Said that as well as it could be said. I completely agree. I'll just add this, I don't think it's making us more efficient to get rid of this organization and giving it to staff, PLDRC. I think the information we're getting from these professionals is really beneficial. And flooding and LID, low-impact development, are two of the most important things we face for our future. I don't think we're there yet. And I appreciate the fact that they have all decided to, except for one, decided to reup. That says a lot to me. So I'm a hard no on it as well. Councilman Johansson.
Yes, sir. Again, I'd like to point out that we are not taking these people away from government. We're disbanding a organization that needs to meet once a month and only once a month, never to meet ad hoc any other time because they can't. They can't collaborate because they're under Sunshine and they can't talk. And I know Dr. Anderson and Suzanne Schreiber and Melissa Lammers and the rest of the good people don't get together, except for once a month, to discuss about the issues of our county and the environment. That's correct, right, Doctor? You do not meet. However, if we wrap up in January and this committee goes away, then they can get together whenever they want. This elected body has a citizen who is not in the PLRDC, has nothing to do with economic development, has nothing to do with growth management, and he emails us every day, sometimes at 2:00 a.m., giving us his input on what he thinks is best for the community. I do not foresee any one of these environmental advocates shutting down their email, going home and planting flowers. They're going to keep on emailing us. They might be even more nimble and more, I say, in our knickers, but more able to engage us, to engage PLRDC and to engage Ginger and to engage each other because they're not part of Sunshine anymore. I believe that this is a very strong group of people, as well as the rest of the committees, but I believe after they get over the fact that we're getting rid of a committee, a formal committee, that they're stronger, if they want to be. And the EnRAC folks, by and large, are very passionate and they're not going to quit. And they may be stronger once they're not tied to Sunshine. And so I support this. I don't want them to go away. I just don't want to have to tie them up once a month for four hours to get it done. And if they don't have the passion, then they drop off. That's just how it goes. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well said, Jake, well said. I think they would be more effective in how you described it. And, you know, I think, Don, I just want to make sure, at least for me, my statement in making that motion is not... I don't want to put exact words in your mouth, but I'm going to paraphrase. I think you said, "We know everything, we don't need you anymore." I'm by far not saying that. I'm saying these are very competent, intelligent people, and I'm very gracious of their contribution. At the same time, my job's bigger to evaluate, right? We talk about size of government, right, expenses. You know, I'm going to quote Ronald Reagan again, it's my third time since I've been here, right? Nothing lasts longer in life than a government program, right? And I think they've done their work, I think they continue to be more effective, collaborating together. And we still have an advisory group that's going to be a layer in there for us. We still have PLDRC. We have a professional staff, and we have PLDRC as that additional layer. I mean, under that premise, Don, let's have another committee for every single committee we have, a subcommittee and a subcommittee because people want to volunteer. I'm being facetious a little bit, right? But there kind of comes a time when, let's keep reducing the size of government when we can. And I think, like Jake said, I think they'll be able to collaborate better. And we know many of those individuals are not scared to come up to this microphone and tell us what they think, and they'll still be involved. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Robbins.
Thank you. Clay, this might be a question for you. Thank you. Who gives EnRAC their, I shouldn't say direction, but their topics of discussion? Does that come from council or is that staff recommendations?
That was y'all. When we put this together, there was a work program that was identified that the council approved as part of the creation of the committee.
So you guys don't, are you there more of like to explain it or are you there to kind of steering committee or...
Ginger hit it right on the head. We provide on the existing regulations, we go through, we identify, as we've referenced, antiquated or perhaps out-of-date things that need to be changed. We identify changes that have occurred at the federal and state level. Then we put out what staff sees as the changes that need to be done to address some of those concerns. Then at that point, the members debate going through the various sections of the code, what should or should not be there, and if there's something that needs to be modified, how that should be modified.
How is that different from then the PLRDC?
The Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission is a state requirement from a land planning agency, and they have to review consistency for the comprehensive plan. And so from that perspective, they're not necessarily, they're not currently engaged in the making of the sausage. They just see the end product and make a determination if it is consistent with the comp plan.
But they can, though, if...
If so directed, they can, we can bring forward to them.
I mean, it's planning, land development is planning.
Regulation Commission.
EnRAC is planning.
Yeah. Again, this is, EnRAC was something that the council, there was discussion about, as you referenced, after our April 22nd, or April 2022 workshop, a desire to look at the codes and see what would come up would be the best codes available. There was a work program, y'all have approved it. If you feel that you want to transfer that over to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission as part of this change, that's your prerogative.
And could we essentially, if we wanted to rotate people in, some of the volunteers from EnRAC, we can also assign them into the PLRDC at some point, right?
Right now, your Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, we'd have to modify how it's created and the membership.
Yeah, but we could essentially vote people in and...
As Ginger referenced, before we bring anything to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission, be it a comp plan amendment or a change to our land development regulations or our zoning ordinance, we send copies of the proposed changes in advance of any public hearing to get feedback from a variety of environmental groups, including the Environmental Coalition of Volusian Flagler Counties, Dream Green Volusia. We also send it to the Volusia Building Industry Association and to V Card. I know that V Card has a standing committee that reviews what we send them, and then they'll send us recommendations. So we're already beforehand sending it out. Many of the folks who are on EnRAC are participating in some of these organizations, some aren't. So again, you may not necessarily get everybody's expertise that's currently on EnRAC, but there will be availability of feedback from those who have an interest.
Thank you, Clay. And to David's point, we just named about a half a dozen of outside groups and boards and committees and subcommittees that essentially overlap, and they all talk already. So I want to make everything count. I feel like they've accomplished what we've said, but it's getting, I do think it's getting a little redundant. And that's it.
Couple quick questions. How many staff members are on EnRAC? Two of you, and is there an attorney?
The number of staff members varies depending on the topic. There's typically always myself and at least one other environmental management employee, typically. There's three of us. We have two staff that are the admin support. We have the folks from IT that come and set up the mics and all that kind of stuff. And we do have an attorney assigned to us.
Once a month?
Clay is there as much as his schedule allows, yes, once a month.
Okay, so that's the expense.
It's a significant amount of staff time, I would say that. The input from the committee is interesting and helpful, but it does take a lot of staff time because in addition to the time we spend in the meeting, we have to prepare for the meeting. And that's really where the time is. So, you know, as an example, one of the questions was, what do all the other counties do about tree replacement fees? So we spent a significant amount of staff time researching every other county and what they do for tree replacement. It's not time wasted by any means, it's interesting and telling information. But that is happening behind the scenes. So there's a lot of staff investment in the committee and in the education and work of the committee.
Okay, thank you. And Clay, how often does the planning and the PLDRC meet?
Once a month.
They... Do they not have enough to do? PLDRC is one of the busiest...
Yes.
...boards in the county.
Yes, sir.
So if they take on this, do they fit it in their day or do they do another meeting?
Again, we would have to see what happens. And I can't, it doesn't mean they meet twice a month, no. It doesn't mean that they go till 5:00, 6:00 o'clock at night, possibly.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to get that out and put it in perspective that these are volunteers and they've already re-upped to volunteer. We're not imposing on them. They may get together again. They may come up and talk to us as individuals, but I think it's irreplaceable for them to be in the same room. There's an energy and a synergy that comes from all of them being together and hearing one another, changing each other's minds from time to time, agreeing on things. I just think it's extremely valuable information, and especially with dealing with some of the most pressing issues that we face in the county of the way we develop and flooding. Danny, before I go to you, I want to ask, I want to remind this, the council, through the attorney, there's only six of us here. So there's a possibility of a tie. If there's a tie vote on this, then the motion fails.
Right, motion would not carry.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to bring that to light. Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Chairman. I think it's important to recognize and stress, too, that nothing is stopping that dynamic from happening, if anything. It's probably strengthening it. These folks, most of them, all communicate, they're all part of some of these groups at Autobonds, which we get emails from regularly. If anything, it gives them the ability to, like Mr. Hanson said, operate outside of the Sunshine. But I want to be clear, nothing is, by table on this, the EnRAC board... But I want to be clear, nothing is, by table on this, the EnRAC board, is not restricting anybody's communication and ability to project their opinions to this body. So I want to be clear. I don't want us painted that picture because that's far from the truth.
Councilman Johansson.
One last stab. Ginger, if they were to disappear on January 1st and wanted to get together but didn't have a space, could you find a space for them all to get together and collaborate? Thank you very much.
Okay, we do have a member of the committee, Dr. Anderson, who would like to speak. If you would please do that now.
Thank you, Chairman Brower. And since I was invoked as one of the experts on the committee, I thought I should step up and share a few thoughts. So for a little bit of history, Councilman Santiago, I was thrilled in March when you said, "Hey, we really need this committee to focus on flooding." I had been begging for a year and a half to get to flooding and stormwater issues. In April, we then had to finish the work we were right in the middle of on trees. We didn't quite finish it, but we got it to a pause. So we did trees in April. In May, Tad Casper and his team came and gave us our first educational program on stormwater. Didn't finish, but Tyler Monberg and Alex Zalinski and Bill Lights, civil engineers and environmental consultants, asked really good and hard questions, sent those staff back to bring back answers. In June, they were not ready, so they canceled the June meeting. We did not meet in June. In July, Tad and team came back, educated us some more. We talked some more. In August, we did not have a quorum, so we did not meet. That is what has happened since you all gave us a charge to do flooding. We have had two meetings on flooding, which were mostly educational. We have not started on policymaking, on actually working on the language of the code. We have a lot more work to do. Could we get it done between now and December? Maybe if we speed up the pace, and I would love it if we could speed up the pace. Because as you say, we are all really busy people doing really important work elsewhere as well. But as Chairman Brower noted, it is really valuable to have us all in the room at the same time, learning from each other, collaborating. I have learned so much from Bob Fitzsimmons, from John Noblet, from Jack Saret, from Jessica Gao, Tyler Monberg. He and I used to fight all the time, and now we find ourselves on the same page more often than not. We are doing the sausage making that, yeah, it would take twice as much time for PLDRC to get in there and do the kind of work that we do. And it has taken a long time, two years. I'm frustrated. Nothing is slower. The only thing slower than higher education is government, and it frustrates me. I want answers now. But it's important work. And, you know, and I would love to come up here on every single development plan. Jacobs Road, all those things that got postponed today, and say, you know, what I have to say about all those. And I used to do a lot of that. I realized it was a much better use of my time to be on a committee that could rewrite the codes, that could actually change policy, not just fight each little development plan one at a time. And that's why I'm there. So, and that's why you've seen less of me here fighting individual codes. So I know I went over time. I just wanted to say it's been a really valuable process for me. I think we have more work to do between, to get the work done. I don't know if we can do it until, by December, but whether you reappoint or you do whatever, I ask you to let us continue our good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Santiago, we have one more member of the public. You want to hear from him before you?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Beachside. I was disappointed when I heard that the meeting, two meetings. Flooding comes up everywhere I go, all right? I'm not affected by flooding because I'm on a hill. But the two streets behind me, they go two feet underground, underwater, all right? It's out in LPGA. It's all over my city, all right? The idea that you've had two meetings and want to stop them now was beyond me. Because I don't think you knew there was only two meetings to discuss this, all right? It is a very, very important issue. We're spending, or got $3 million to do a study in Daytona Beach, all right? And that's not even going to solve anything. It's just going to let us know that there's flooding and these are possible ways to solve it. They don't have enough information, and we don't know how many meetings they will have until December. We don't know who will be available. To put this on the PLDRC, it doesn't make any sense. They're one of our busiest groups. Then to add on to something? I went through this when I was teaching. They decided at Tallahassee that we didn't need all of these courses, all right? They were redundant. So why did you need jazz, or orchestra, or band, or marching, when all you needed was just one chorus class? You get rid of all the others. Why did you need all the sports? So they wanted to eliminate five or six of the sports. So they were going to eliminate 70 of our teachers from our school because they were not needed. They were not part of education, all right? Are you doing the same thing now by saying, "We don't need these. This is just another level of government"? I think this is a level that is not being discussed at PLDRC, that would never be discussed at PLRDC, nor would it, these people get together and discuss this in the depth that you're asking them to, all right? They need government help to guide them into this issue, and you get the best and the brightest, and you learn from them. And I think by disbanding it, you are eliminating the information that you need to make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Chairman. And I know probably I'm out of order as far as talking again. So I'll call myself out. I was a little disturbed by one of the comments, though, because I want to make sure that maybe I misunderstand. I understand this group to be advisory in concepts of methodologies, not in actual drafting of language. So I want to make sure that I get clarity of that.
The way it's been working out, the system is we are having them look at specific changes to the codes, and they are making recommendations on the language and the specificity on some of those issues.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Clay. Thank you for sharing that, because I didn't know that was the, maybe that's my fault. I thought it would be more advisory from concept perspective, and then, you know, we have people put it together. All compelling arguments. I still think we can get the work done as the motion stands. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Robbins.
I just have one last thing to add. Guys, what's the number one issue when it comes to solving our flooding problems? Anybody want to take a poke?
Less rain.
Less, besides less rain. It's money. How many did we just get from Transform 386? We just raised stormwater fees. We just, we're getting ready to raise a whole bunch of other stuff. Don, he brought up a good point during 386, trying to get another $50 million for stormwater. It didn't ride. It didn't fly. Where were some of these people in this group fighting for more storm, if stormwater was in the, at a top-level concern? How come we didn't hear more people, you know, wanting more funds for stormwater? I think there's other ways to skin this cat. And there's other, there's other groups that overlap to do this.
Well, I'll tell you where I was trying to get more money for stormwater. I went to Donna and asked her, asked her, "How do we get more water, more money for stormwater?" And she, she came up with a lot more money so we could take it from here, through the Transform 386 fund. So I didn't let that lie. Our number, what is the cost of the flooding? You just related it to money. We just need money. And I disagree with that. We need money. But the reason is because the way that we're developing, and if we continue on, there's not enough money that can come into this county to repair all the damage. So this committee is extremely helpful in these areas to recommend policy to us, to Clay. I just think it's a complete, we're not being responsible by telling them, "Thank you for your service. Now disband before we get..." And yeah, they can meet privately, but it's, we won't have the same energy and synergy as we do right now. They need to be allowed to continue their work. They can tell us when they're, when they're done. At least give them another year. Councilman Dempsey.
Yeah, I, just being over here on the West Side and hearing concerns about, I'm a pro-property rights person, as you know. I believe developers should be able to develop. But it's got to be responsible development. I think we all say that in campaigning. And, but flooding's real. I mean, it is. Places that I've gone to 30 years ago that were never flooded now are flooding. And I don't, I haven't settled in on what the answer is. Danny, you just asked me the question, what's the cause of flooding or whatever? I don't know. I really don't know. Is it overdevelopment? Is it just the weather in general and just the cycles of the weather? I have no idea. And I don't think the problem's fixed. I don't think there's a clear answer as to what the issue is. I would love to know what their committee, I mean, you look down this list. These are not just, I mean, these people are all experts in their areas. And they, I think it's, we should be honored by the fact that these successful professionals are willing to give us their time, and time is money. And they're willing to give us, I mean, how much would we spend on a consulting firm? God knows, we spend, what, $50,000, $100,000 for consulting firms? And here we got people probably warranting that same kind of money to give us advice, and they're doing it for free. And we're talking about money. How much do we spend on Hunden for that study? I mean, come on, guys. We're getting a high-quality consulting group willing to give us valid consultation advice for nothing. And we're going to sit there and talk about the couple hundred extra dollars or whatever it is in staff time? And it's great that staff is forced to be there because it forces them to show up and be educated by these experts. I think it's terrible to sit here and just not give them the forum to speak from. And I don't know if we've even, have we even contacted Ronnie Mills and the PLDRC and asked them if they even want this extra burden? I mean, we may lose some volunteers from the PLDRC who don't want all this extra work. I mean, here's people wanting to do it, and they're highly qualified. I think it's terrible to get rid of these guys. So I'm going to stand by my no vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Out of order. I called a question.
Okay. Councilman Robbins wanted to speak. Do you, if you want to?
Call the question.
Okay, well, turn about as fair play, maybe. Okay.
It's fair play, Mr. Chair. You shouldn't say that, because it's fair play because it's part of our rules. I just didn't like that comment. I'm playing within the rules.
I don't really, okay, fine. You didn't like the comment. There's a whole bunch of comments you make that I don't like, and I just let it go because that's how you are. Carissa, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Robbins.
Play with the rules.
Can you repeat the motion, Ms. Green?
Yeah, to table the reappointments and extend the appointment of the current board members until December 31st.
Yes.
Mr. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Dempsey?
No.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Mr. Reinhardt?
No.
Mr. Brower?
No, but it's a tie vote, and so the, so it fails, the committee will end December 31st, which is...
No, sir.
You're back in, you're back in the situation of appointments.
Correct.
Okay.
Move to approve all appointments recommended for the board.
For a term expiring when?
It's as listed. I'm not going to get into that right now. It's a two-year term, correct?
Correct. There is a nomination method, though.
Got it.
So I'm not legal would have to advise if you can get rid of the...
All right. Then I make the motion that we go individually and get these nominations taken care of individually. That's a motion.
Okay.
He said we can go.
We have a motion in a second. To do the nominations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll start by nominating Wendy Anderson.
And I know this has come up before. It's entirely up to council. You can vote once as a slate or vote on each.
I made the motion to go individually.
Okay. And just for clarification, Suzanne Shiver, Alex Zalinski, did not want to be?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have a second for Mr. Brower's appointment?
Second.
For Wendy Anderson, okay. Any discussion on Dr. Anderson? All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I recommend Donna Brosmer as my at-large rep. Understanding, I believe, Carissa, that if she gets elected to the school board, she cannot participate? I forget the.
What is the other board she's on?
She's, she may be on the school board in November.
It's not a dual office holding.
Got it. All right. Donna Brosmer.
Clay, did we have anything, when this was created, that prohibited being a member of another board?
Perfect.
Do we have a second for Mr. Johansson's?
Yes. All in, all in favor of Donna Brosmer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Donna is nominated.
Can you clarify who was the second? Sorry.
Councilman Robbins. Who's next on the rotation?
Mr. Dempsey is.
Bob Fitzsimmons.
Second. Johansson.
We have a nomination of Bob Fitzsimmons, seconded by Jake Johansson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Reinhardt is next.
Nominate Jessica Gao.
Second, Johansson.
All in favor, say aye.
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 You got the second, Carissa?
It's Mr. Johansson, yes, sir. The next person is Mr. Robbins.
Carissa, do I get one or two?
You'll get a second one later on.
Okay. I'll nominate Bliss Jamison.
Second, Johansson.
All in favor of Bliss Jamison, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She is approved.
The next person would be Mr. Campbell, because he's not here. It's Mr. Santiago.
Tom Burbank.
Second, Johansson.
All in favor of Tom Burbank, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next person is Mr. Santiago.
Second, Johansson.
All in favor of Sarah Lee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next person would be Mr. Campbell, because he is not here. It is Mr. Robbins.
Melissa Lammers.
Second, Johansson.
All in favor of Melissa Lammers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She is approved, six to zero. She is approved, six to zero.
Next council member is Member Reinhardt.
Uh, Tyler Monberg.
Second, Johansson.
All in favor of Tyler Monberg, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He is approved, six to zero.
Next person is Mr. Dempsey.
Uh, Jessica Gao.
I already did.
Oh, you got her? Oh, I'm sorry. What, Monberg's going?
Current members, you currently have appointed are Ms. Wendy Anderson, Ms. Donna Brosmer, Bob Fitzsimmons, Jessica Gao, Bliss Jamison, Tom Burbank, Sarah Lee Morrissey, Melissa Lammers, and Tyler Moberg.
John Geronimo.
All in favor of John Geronimo?
There's a second.
Second, Johansson.
Sorry, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
The next council member would be Member Johansson.
I nominate John Hoblick.
Is there a second?
Second.
Matt Reinhardt seconds John Hoblick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hoblick is...
The final member is, uh, the chair.
Is there anybody left?
Jack Saret.
Um, Jack Saret, and...
Lights.
Bill Lights. Correct, you would have, um, Mr. Bill Lights that could be appointed by Mr. Kim, and then there would be one vacancy.
Did you say something? Okay.
Both of the vacancies or appointments would be Mr. Kim's to make.
All right, thank you. All right. Have we completed with item fourteen? You're satisfied? Okay. And that was our last item. Do we have any public participation?
Yes, I believe that those are them.
Pardon me?
Carrie just gave them to you.
Okay. I thought it was the one he just did, but so, John Nicholson. And then you'll be followed by Karen Clark.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. I know I botched it earlier about the, uh, the voting, but, um, it was brought up, and I find that the public, I mean, when people look at your meetings, it is generally, and someone mentions to me that they've looked at it, they're from either the county or from a city. It's not the general public at large. They don't know you guys from Whole New Orleans. Unless you are in a group somewhere, that group will know you, but another group will not. So the totality of the county, all five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand people knowing all of you is virtually slim or none. Likewise, with my city, the same thing. People ask me all the time, "What's so-and-so like?" I've attended over five thousand meetings over the years. So I generally know, after several meetings, what a person is like, all right? I generally know whether they're conservative or they're liberal, if they have an agenda. Someone's gonna talk about the jail, oh, yeah, I know who that is, all right? Somebody's gonna talk about the east side, somebody's gonna talk about the west side, I know who it is, all right? So they'll ask me, "What is his view, why?", all right? So when they ask me these things, it's like, well, I know this person, and I feel, like with the chair's voice, all right? There were four people. I knew three of them personally, one I knew of, all right? And I could generally say that, um, the runoff would be two, all right? It would probably be Brower, because he had been chair, he's done nothing terribly wrong, he will get a number of votes. The second one was backed by a number of wealthy people, well-connected people. He would be the second one, and sure, it turns out that way. So, um, when it was said that I was not gonna vote for whom I'm gonna vote for, well, actually, I don't even know whom I'm gonna vote for. Like, the last three presidential elections, I don't know until I get in the booth. Because both of the presidential, not the chairs, the booths, the presidential ones are both bad candidates. It's very hard to get good candidates to run. I think the, three of the candidates that ran for the chair are all good candidates, all right? I may end up voting for Jeff, because although I said he hasn't moved as fast as I would like him to be, I'm worried about his opponent, the change. You guys are working great together as a team. The other councils that I've been over the last forty years have never worked together this well. So I would hate to change something that's working well. Uh, my other candidate would be for Matt, for the county. For my city would be Ken, and for Krista for the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Karen Clark.
Hello, everybody. Well, I'm here to say nice things. Number one, we wanna thank the street crew that comes and takes care of the trees. Robert Peterson up in Glenwood, as you know, we have very old trees. And when anything gets called in, they're there in an instant. And they take down whatever needs to be done, and you'd never know they were there. So we gotta give them a thumbs up. Same thing, we need more hills block view because the cars and whatnot in the Glenwood area, which has hills, and you can't see the car in front of you. And again, somebody almost went, and I have a big truck, and the guy behind me didn't see it. Thank goodness he never hit me, he's still alive. Let me see. The, Clay, when you go into the zoning department, the first two people you see is Breezy and Cat. They have to be cloned because they make everybody feel like they're important. And I've seen other times when they didn't, and I went and called Clay and let him know, when there's a, a person that doesn't need to be around human beings, that are somebody that greets you. And this weekend, we had cows, little teenage, five of them, running on Grand Avenue. And I called the nine-one-one sheriff's office, non-emergency. They already knew whose cows they were, they were only like a mile and a half away. But we were able to, for some reason, they walked in my backyard, we closed the gates on three of them. But the deputy was in there, they had the lasso, I mean, it was, four horses showed up with people, we heard you needed help over here. So it was a whole community of various background people coming in to help round out five cows. And somebody loaned one guy, who ended up being a rodeo man, during his, as he said, younger, lighted weight person. But he got the two cows. But it was a whole community. I mean, they come in with a cow trail or coming in, you know? It was absolutely amazing. And that's why we wanna keep the west side not housed up. Make them, you know, anyway, thank you, and it's, it's a pleasure to be still living here. I'm here thirty years, and most of you guys know me in the county. So, thank you, guys. That's it.
Thank you very much. Thomas Rutledge.
Good afternoon, thank you for your service to our community. I'm Thomas Rutledge, four-one-one-two, Oriole Avenue, Wilbur, I'd see. You've heard from me before regarding the severe erosion on the forty-one-hundred block of, uh, South Atlantic Avenue in Wilbur. Since that time, we've all had a chance to kinda take a look at it. Mr. Reinhardt's been kind enough to come out and take a look amongst others. Just to keep you up to date, Pond Sinlet, since all that time, they have had a chance to take a look at it. And they have sent a letter to the council via Matt and also the staff, the staff of the government here, the county manager. And with a full unanimous vote, they have the full weight of the Pond Sinlet government that wants to take a look at this, to advance it to the level of an agenda item with a full council debate. And what I wanted to do for some of you who may not have been down there or taken a look yourself, is my concern is mainly about the road and the aggressive erosion that will take place in a storm with a decent-sized surge. And, uh, but I did wanna go back three spaces, 'cause I forgot to say this when I walked up the microphone. I wanna thank the county, and I have gratitude for re-upping the trap bags that are there. I don't think they'll stand up to a storm surge that comes way above them with huge wave action that's loaded with debris that would puncture them and all that. I don't think that would work. But for now, to prevent the further erosion on the normal high-tide events, it certainly does help, and I'm thankful for that, that that happened. I thank the staff and the government here. One thing I wanna point out that may not be aware is when the road goes, it's gonna take several more houses. If the, if the sixty feet of sand goes, it's gonna take several more houses, okay? And then when it eats into the road, it's gonna go into the west side of South Atlantic Avenue on that block. And those people are not wealthy people. Let me break this down for a human interest story for you, if you want. Is the guy on the north end of the block is ninety-five years old, he's vibrant, he drives. If, if his house gets threatened and he's gotta go, he, he's probably not gonna survive it. To the south, there's four small apartment blocks, those are the working poor. You know, the people that pay the most in taxes are the working poor because of use or fees and this and that and the other. They're the kinda people that are gonna have to look at their daughter and say, "We're gonna have to leave the cat behind." The guy further south is a fixed-income retiree, he's a regular guy. He put his life savings into building his dream retirement home. His is definitely threatened. He, he has no way to affect this at all except through his government, which is you guys, to help do something about it. So what I'm asking is, please, let's elevate this to the next level. Please back up our representative, at least get us talking about it further. I'm not asking you to solve the problem now, just to get it on the agenda for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that takes us to, uh, closing comments of the county manager.
I have nothing today.
And that takes us to the closing comments of the county attorney.
Yeah, no comments, thank you.
That takes us to, uh, Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing other than, there was a couple comments that I'd like to just quickly address. Uh, on a previous item, um, it was said that we need to change our development pattern and the way we are developing when it comes to what we do in unincorporated Volusia. But outside of the cities, staff did a great presentation a year, year or two ago that gave our development numbers and what we've actually done here in unincorporated Volusia. And, and what I would like to do, Chair, is just try to get a bead on what we can do, and people are noticing it in the community of what we can get done and the ability that we can get it done and the speed that we can get it done at. But as a team, what would you, knowing what we know about really the minimal development compared to the cities in unincorporated Volusia, at this point, right where we're at, we've addressed the LID standards. Other than that, what do you, what can you recommend so we can work better together to change our development standards or, or the way that, that we are developing in unincorporated Volusia? Is that something you can direct us on or?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Number one, as you just mentioned, LAD, I think what the N-RAC committee did was say, um, you can do it if you want, not do it if you want. I think it, I think they need to go back and look at it, and it needs to be...
Other than that?
It needs to be some, well, you asked me, so I'm giving you an answer. So we, uh, we need to have real implementation of LAD, and that might require, working with PLDRC and Clay's, uh, group, division of not requ, not stacking layer upon layer of regulations to, to remove some, to use a good LID. We're, we're not, we're not anywhere close to, um, being finished with that yet. The, um, you, I think you just said, and I'm paraphrasing, so correct me if I'm wrong, that there's not much development in West Volusia.
I didn't say West Volusia, I said compared to the cities. You're saying we have to change our development pattern. Other than projects that have been, and I'll put this in a phrase that we can all understand, other than projects that have had prior development rights or been plotted or more final plot plans, compared to the cities, we haven't approved, and I've been on the same, I've been on the council the same time you have, Chair, we haven't approved that much compared to the cities or changed the comp plan that, that much, and that is a fact. What I'm trying to do is see how we can all better align in kind of, I shouldn't say change your thought process, 'cause I don't wanna change who you are, but I'm trying to understand, and I, as a team and a team member, when, when we get told that we need to change a development plan, what would you like to see different other than LID, which we've already addressed?
Well, we've not addressed it, but I, so I would like to address that. I've also asked when, uh, when, uh, John Booker came to me last week and said, "What do you wanna put on the agenda for the legislative?" I would, and I don't think this requires legislative action, but I would like to see this council set a requirement for a supermajority to change the comp plan or to change zoning, because that's the, the issue. We, we are very, um, cognizant of the, uh, property rights that somebody who buys land for development has, and we're not very cognizant of the property rights of everybody that lives around it who gets flooded from the development that happens. The thing that we can, so, so those are two more. The other thing that we could do that would probably have the most impact is we just approve more studies for, um, uh, the different flood zones in the county. We, we need to complete the studies of, of, uh, all of the, the different districts for flooding and come up with the required storm order plan for each of those. And we can also, we can affect the cities quite a bit according to the county charter in the minimum, minimal standards that are required. I think we need to go back and look at all, all of those. Minimal standards, you know, I have kids. I, I don't wanna teach my kids just the, the minimum or the minimal standards in, in living life and treating other people. I want them to, to do the, the very best. We need to do the same in our cities. We, we continue to wash our hands of it and say we can't affect the cities. We can. We have the tools to, to do that. So that's probably where we could have the most and greatest effect.
Chairman, in all, in all due respect, it makes it seem by those statements, and given the information, the factual information that we have, that this council is not doing some of that stuff. But if those are concerns, then why haven't, why are we getting, kinda, your teammates getting blamed for it? Why hasn't some of this stuff come up? But at the end of the day, we all, as, as property owners, we all have those same rights, but it's getting packaged in a way that I, I don't think is a hundred percent on, on the up and up. And we've heard a lot of none of this, and, and we have minimum standards in Volusia County, or, uh, with the Volusia County Council, our standards, minimum, minimum standards, not minimal.
Same thing.
No, it's not the same thing, Chair. Minimum standards, our minimum standards in probably nine out of ten cases are above state and federal requirements. Minimal is you're doing miniscule, you're doing minimal, you're giving minimal energy towards something. That is not, if, if, if we actually sat down and looked at this, and we've been both doing this the same amount of time, there's two different definitions for that word, and we have to start being a little bit more, more careful. But I just want us to work better together. I, I didn't hear any issues, or I heard some, some new issues, but I just don't want us as a team to get blamed for something when none of this stuff has come up in the last four years. When, when some of this stuff, it, it could just, could be packaged together. I just wanna work better together and try to get us all on the same team. And if we're doing something wrong, I think we're all old enough that we could, can take that constructive criticism. But also, if we're doing something right, I think it's best for the team to also say that we're doing something right, so, thanks.
Okay, well, since you asked me, I'll just end it with this. I'm not blaming this council, but I have spoken ad nauseam for four years about the issues of flooding and that we need to deal with it and that we need to look at the way we're developing, 'cause we may have minimum standards, but they're not working. we're developing, because we may have minimum standards, but they're not working. We have flooding from one end of the county to the other. The N-RAC committee has told us that. What we're doing isn't working. We have to look, even the chair of the PLDRC has said, I'm not voting on any more development until we solve flooding issues. There is a problem, and we need to address it. The N-RAC committee is a great way to address it, and I'm going to bring up in my time two issues on flooding that we can deal with. So I'll continue to do it.
And I get that, Chair, and I'm not going to be redundant here, but our flooding issues, and the majority of them, they've existed since the beginning of time. We need money for a lot of this stuff. Hold on a second now. But also, too, we have to come to the realization and be a hundred percent truthful with the public that compared to the cities, when we make blanket statements, we have to change our development patterns. What development patterns can we change in unincorporated Volusia that we have control over that we're not doing right now? That's all I'm asking, just so we can get...
And I'm glad you asked that, because we've not had the same flooding since the beginning of time. We are flooding out entire neighborhoods because of the way that we're developing now, where we go in and drain wetlands, bring in thousands of cubic yards of fill, and lift up a new neighborhood five feet higher than everybody around it, pave it over, plant the houses. The first rain comes and all of that water is displaced downhill to the neighborhoods around it that never flooded before. I just went to Mainland Senior High School and met with the school board and all the neighbors around there. When they rebuilt Mainland Senior High School and they lifted the ground level up, they put a storm order retention pond with a few feet of fill dirt between this huge pond and a neighborhood, and it overflows, it goes right through the wall, and it floods the neighborhood. It has destroyed houses. And the school board came and met with them, thankfully. They did a great job. They hired an engineer, and they said, we don't take, accept any responsibility, but we are going to solve this problem for you. And so they are spending well over a million dollars to move this retention pond so that it has, instead of a few feet of wall space where the water just pushes right through the sand, it'll have sixty, eighty feet. And so that's the kind of thing that needs to be done. The school board stepped up and was doing it, and I applaud them for that.
And Chairman, I'm not disagreeing with some of the stuff that you're saying, but what you are saying has to do with state building requirements and federal FEMA plane requirements. A lot of it's outside of our purview. What can this council do? We're following the legal guidelines that were given by legal, by the state and the federal agencies. What can we do better together and get through some of these catch-all statements that are simply not a hundred percent? That's all I'm saying. We need to drill down on it. I didn't hear a specific answer. I heard general statements. I want to know how we can work better together with actual policy and not just talk. That's all.
Okay. Well, what I just offered to you was not just talk, and every member can do that. They can go, just like I did, wasn't, I'm countywide, so I went to Mainland Senior High School because the neighbor of the city, and asked the city to rectify that. It ain't going to happen, so they corrected it themselves. That's the kind of proactive work that we need. Go out, look at the flooding issues, find out what's causing it, and do something about it.
Once again, Chairman, I'll put this to bed. I'm not disagreeing with you and some of the stuff that's within the cities, but as a council, what can we do for the fourth time?
I just told you.
In unincorporated Volusia that we are primarily responsible for, when you say we need to change our development patterns, what can we do to change our development patterns in unincorporated Volusia? When we have minimum development, and the development that we have approved has either been pre-approved, a final plot plan, or something that they have the right to do. So how can we, in unincorporated Volusia, it's something to think about, you don't have to answer it now, I know it's tough, but how can we do better?
I gave you a whole list of answers, Danny, and you don't want to listen to any of them. I just told you, we need to do the flooding studies that are required and then come up with the storm order control plans. I've brought that up, the count, we voted on it, we're adding a couple more. I think we need to do them all, and the ones, the areas that are still flooding, like at the chairman of the PLDRC's house and that surrounding neighborhood, we need to drill down on that and find out what we can do, what's happening, and a lot of that is affected by the city of Deland. We need to stop saying that, well, we can't do anything about this because it's the city of Deland, and go to them and work with them, just like I did with the school board, and solve the problem.
Mr. Chairman, can I chime in on this?
You can.
I think what Danny's trying to get to, or he's gotten to, I should say, at least for me, is that that scenario on the school thing in Daytona, we don't have jurisdiction.
I did it anyway.
No, I'm not saying you can't do it. I will never say that. I will never say that. What I'm saying is that we don't have jurisdiction from a policymaking perspective, and I think that's where Danny's trying to get to, because we're policymakers, right? We make policy that affects the county, and when it comes to development, it affects mostly areas. And I know where you were going, the environmental standards that we have in our charter do give us additional powers and influence over things that occur in the city. So I'll acknowledge that, and I think we should look at those. But I think it just, if I, I'll speak for myself, the impression that comes across in the public is that this is all county's fault, right? And when we have any one of our members of our bodies or colleagues out here acknowledging that, maybe not specifically with those words, but in the context of how they speak, it falls on our shoulders on things that in some many cases don't have anything to do with us. And I think that's where Danny was going, and I would just say that's how I interpret it, and I'm done with that topic. Thank you.
Okay, good. Councilman Dempsey.
Point of order. No, I wish I could tell you what the problem is. I, almost two years into it, I still don't know what the problem with flooding is. There is a flooding problem. I don't know what the answer is. All I can do is swear to you on a stack of bibles that, on Martin Luther King, I used to ride all through those woods thirty years ago, and there was a high and dry, never flooding, and now you go back through there, pre-hurricane, post-hurricane, it doesn't matter, there's standing water all the time. And then you get the lady, like, last meeting, she came in here, showed the videos of her house, that Daytona Park Estates flooded. I know other people there who have problems with flooding. Flooding's a real issue. I don't know how to fix it. I don't know if the blame is with the county, if it's with the city. I do know that, I think, well, I was told that thirty years ago, thirty-four years ago, with the counties, what, seven hundred thousand acres? And I was told that cities were made up a hundred thousand of that, and now it's doubled. Now there's two hundred thousand acres of municipal and only five hundred of county. So the cities are annexing in like crazy, and the perception is we can't stop them. But Jeff, the only reason I'm even talking right now is because you kind of, you piqued my curiosity, when you said there are stuff we could do to either sanction the cities or control the cities better, because if there's anything that we can do to the cities, I still see this more of the cities allowing too much development. All MLK was all city of Deland. They're the ones that did that and created, my perception is that they've created that problem through all this subdivision annexation. So can we, is there a way staff could give us a briefing on what our options are to do with the cities, to how we can strong-arm these cities to be more responsible in their developments? Because I do see the flooding coming up more and more. I've got a lot of input from, on Jacob's Dairy, this project coming up right now. I mean, there's a lot of people that don't want anything that's going to add to the flooding, and I don't know if it is or not. I want to see growth. I want to see developments. I want to see people be able to make a living doing subdivisions and using their property. But I am concerned about the flooding, and if there's anything we can do to stop these cities from just annexing in, and then all of a sudden, you know, there's nothing we can do, I just, if there's something we can do, I'd like to know what that is. That's all.
Yes, and just to very quickly answer your question, yes, we can, in fact, the next meeting, I'm going to put it on the agenda that I've worked for, I don't know, several months with some people, just residents that are experiencing severe flooding, and we've gone through the charter, looked at different things. I'm going to discuss it with Michael Dyer more and bring it to the council at the next meeting so that we can all discuss it and see what we can do. Honestly, I've avoided to, I hate the state telling us what we have to do, taking our own local control away, and I've, so I've avoided doing that to our own cities, saying that we're going to override you this, but we need to discuss it. We need to see, this is within our legal parameters, this is our responsibility. So how do we handle that? Hopefully, getting the cities on the same side of the table with us and discussing it with us, not forcing them to...
You'll be glad to know that I am, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Well, he's not had his crack at it yet. That was the first one, Councilman Robbins. Now we go to Councilman Santiago.
Couple things. One thing was a little bit disturbing to me when I heard some information shared today that, I want to make sure I understood it clearly, the chairman of our PLDRC board has made a public statement that he's not going to vote for any development project. Can you clarify that, Mr. Chair? I think you made the statement.
Yeah, no, I did say that. It's pretty close to a quote, that he wasn't going to vote for any more development until we solve our flooding problems. I'm not, who sits in the PLDRC? Nobody here. He can, Ronnie Mills can chime in to...
No, 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 I don't need him to chime in. If that statement was made, that's concerning to me, because people that come before that board have rights, and if the chairman is making a public statement like that, I would ask this council to ask him to reevaluate that or determine or not whether or not he can continue to serve in that capacity. We cannot have people that represent us, and they have a fiduciary responsibility also to apply the state law in anything they're hearing. I'm not telling him how to vote, but if he sent that publicly, that's wrong. He should not do that.
We'll let him respond, but I think it was in our notes from last week.
I didn't see it.
Don sees it.
No, I'm just reading the transcript from the PLDRC meeting on item six.
Well, he didn't say that?
Well, no, no.
The transcript may not have it.
Not in this transcript, no.
Okay. Well, you know what? If staff can get us what exactly he said during that meeting or the next meeting, and then we'll address it then.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
And I know we've talked about this at different times individually. There's a difference between a comprehensive plan and a rezoning. Rezoning is quasi-judicial, so...
But quasi-judicial also has rights in the process.
Yeah, so that's, that's the decision that's be based on, the evidence and the criteria, so having a blanket statement, that would be problematic. A comp plan amendment is a legislative decision by this council, and you have the greatest discretion when it comes to a comp plan. It's not based on criteria. So, but we can look into it a little bit more and see what was actually said.
Yeah, I would check the transcript from the fifty townhouses.
I'll just let staff tell us, you know, what was exactly, what context, because we need to determine from there. I agree, policy comp plan is policy. The other stuff is procedural. Thank you, Mr. Chair, on that part. You know, Mr. Chair, I did comment back at you today. After I made my point of order, I think I called a question, and we had a little back and forth, and I stopped, but I think it's important to discuss it in a professional standard. I think the, you made the comment that, talk about fairness, I think something along those lines when I called for the question, and I was bothered by that because by making that statement and point saying that I'm not being fair in the context of how you said it. And I replied that I'm playing, I used the word, playing by within the rules, right? We have rules that govern how we do business, and I utilize the procedure that's available to any one of us at any time. Any one of us can call it, and I respect it, I could vote with you or not. But I didn't appreciate that comment, because that's what's hurt. If I don't respond to it, just put yourself out there and seeing it. The chairman is saying what David just did right now is not fair. Well, yes, it is. It's within the rules that we have all agreed to operate under. So, and I think you replied that I've said stuff, and I said, well, then call me out. And I appreciate that. If I procedurally say or do something that's within proper, I don't have a problem being called. I self-called myself out when I was taking the third bite of the apple, as we described. And I think several of us took the third bite in the apple. And that's my other comment on here, that I think, you know, we need to go back again and readdress and refresh everyone on parliamentary procedures and how we're going to operate, because we were asking questions, debating, asking questions, debating, we're in debate, then continue to ask questions. It seemed all over the place. The reason I think we should have more structure behind that, because, I'll speak for myself, when I ask my questions, I ask it in a methodology that I think I know I'm going to be shut down at this point, and I prepare myself in the process for it. But if we're going to be free, open, then I'll prepare for free and open. Or if we're going to have structure, let's relook at it. One other question I have, Mr. Chair. Can staff, the ninety-two beach thing, can we get some, I was concerned about, you know, this business owners. I really genuinely feel bad for them if what they're saying is true. Can we get some information on that? Or if we can relook at it, I'll let George, but relook at it to make sure that we're allowing for these businesses to have some type of successful business?
Well, we've given them access. I don't think at any point did we ever say that there'd be a, the lane would be open. So that part, I don't believe ever happened. But we'll look at the kind of pedestrian traffic that we can allow in through there. As we discussed, I think in a previous meeting, if we do, if we were to go in an area where we kept part open and not open, you're just prolonging how long you're going to be there. And I think the goal here is to get this ramp so that there would be access through there by February. So as we now go into the end of the, you know, to kind of the peak, end of the season would have been this weekend, things start really kind of flowing down from that point.
He said we're behind on the project. Is that true? One of the speakers?
I don't think we're behind.
Said another year.
Yeah. Now, the other thing that was brought up was about the light and the operation of the light. That is, now you're into the Department of Transportation's project, and that's their control, and Massey, who is a contractor that we use and also the Department of Transportation uses, they're basically, as the contractor, they're controlling that light. So we could talk to the department and see if there's anything we can do, and they could talk to Massey. It's always unfortunate. That's why we try to do these things as fast as possible, because we know that there's going to be a business affected in these urban areas.
Would you like a quick response to your questions to me? It's, I don't want to make a big deal out of it, but I think it deserves a question. Call the question is, I do think it's unfair, might be one of the rules, but the thing, one of the things that I try and do for everybody that sits up here is give each of you an opportunity to speak when you want to speak. And when I see people's names on here that are waiting to speak and somebody says, call the question, to me, what I hear is, I don't want to hear from them. And I just, I think that's, I think we should have more respect for one another, so that's...
I'll respond to your response. And you're right, to you, it may feel that way, but to me, I'm using the rules that we've adopted.
Yeah, I know.
That's it. If you want to change the rules, let's propose that, right? But that's all it is. I'm not, and it's not that I don't want to hear from them. If you realize when I called that question, it fell exactly what you said was going to happen fifteen minutes prior to that. It was three to three. We were beating a dead horse, Mr. Chair, and since we're talking about it, I hope that as the chair, you can rein us in. I don't have a problem with that. Rein us in professionally, right? If... If, if, if we're going on too long, I don't have a problem with, for example, gentlemen, we've been saying the same thing for 20, 30 minutes, can we just come in and land this ship? That's what I would expect of the chair, to help us move more forward effectively. I do not get offended to that. And you're right, and that's what happened there, and that's why I called the question. And it fell exactly as you predicted, 15, 20 minutes before.
I, I tried to treat each of you with respect. I would never say, "You're beating a dead horse" to them. So, which goes to your, your first question that stay, you know, maybe we need to do another workshop on Roberts Rules of Order. I understand them well. I often, today was one of them, we were having a, a pretty spirited debate, we were, there was questions, I think every one of us asked questions out of, the questions were over, we're in debate, we're still asking questions. I think it was, it was on the N-RAC thing. I just give you that leeway because of the respect that I have for this council, and the way I view my job is to allow you every opportunity to speak. If you, if this board wants me to apply the rule heavy-handed, I, I'll be glad to do that at your request, but, so we'll have questions, now we're in debate. Usually somebody, Jake or somebody, will call me out, you know, you're, and then I'll say, "Okay, we got to go back to the rules." I just try and give everybody an opportunity to speak. Michael Dyer.
Sure, it's council's pleasure. We were planning on bringing back the gentleman that spoke on Roberts Rules shortly after your organizational meeting next year. If you like that sooner or a different schedule, just let, just let me know.
Okay. All right. Okay, Councilman Dempsey.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but I guess I'm going to follow up. And Jeff, I think, I think the way you handled it today was fine. I mean, I like latitude being given to the chair. I don't think that you, I mean, even David, with all due respect, I mean, you said, "This is my third time up, I know I'm breaking the rule, but here I go, I'm going to go ahead and break the rule anyway." So, I mean, well, that's fine, but you did too. So, I mean, it's just, I think we got to give the chair some flexibility, you know, you cannot, I mean, just the way that conversation unfolded, it called for more input, I think. I don't think any of that time was wasted, I think all of it was productive. Your, your third comment, which was out of bounds, actually was productive, so I'm glad I got to hear it. So, I just, I think things are fine the way they are. I don't, I don't really want to see Jeff get chastised for that. We disagree on a lot, I mean, here I am, the losing voter on a lot of stuff, including today, but we don't always vote the same, but I like the way he does run the show, so I don't think he did anything wrong. I really would encourage discretion to the chair. Okay, okay, you can yell at me, I don't care.
All right. I understand what's, what was said, and, and thank you for that, Don. But anyway, Councilman Johansson.
Thank you, sir. A few things. Last meeting, I believe, in the, in the consent agenda, we approved an increase in funding for Team Volusia from $250,000 to $300,000 per year. I value what Team Volusia does, but since I got here in 2015, there's always been a movement to try to get them past 50% public funding. They're at like 53 right now, with every, everybody kicking in more money. I briefly talked to the chair of, of the Team Volusia Economic Development Corporation, and I've briefly talked to George, but I, I really would like this council's support in moving toward getting them to a number we can all agree to within five years. I would like to see 70% private, 30% public. We already provide a lot of staff, and a lot of staff work toward economic development, and as, as do the cities, and, and here we are in addition, writing, writing a check. So, I would like to have us consider, and I can, I can make a motion, that, that we work with Team Volusia. I think, do we have an elected member, George, or is it you on the executive committee?
I'm on the executive. I'm on the executive. There is a-
We do have an elected, right? So that, that George from the executive committee and whoever our elected rep is, work with Team Volusia to try to get something other than teetering at 50%, just so they can come to us and say, "We're above 50%, give us more money." So, I would like that put back on the agenda so Team Volusia can come and explain the situation to us, and, and at that point, we can make that, that motion to come up with a percentage somewhere above 53%. And, and you'll see, I, I will have a conversation with Suzanne here, hopefully in the next few weeks, after we can find some time. We got an email from Suzanne a couple of days ago, with all the organizations and all the money we give, and, and how much is matched. What I, what I want to understand is, you know, back to Mr. Dempsey subsidies things, I know a lot of, a lot of things are funded by federal and state grants, and, and I'm not saying that's pass-through money, but people can capitalize on that with matching dollars. I understand a lot of things that nonprofits do, that we fund, are, they're almost like subcontractors of ours, they're things that we don't want to do as a government, but we think are important. There's cultural arts out there, there's plenty of things out there. SMA does a lot for us. But I want to take a healthy look at that to make sure we're giving the right amount of money. We've talked about this before, the right amount of money to the right people for the right reason to do, back, back to those things, those, those core responsibilities of government. I, I think a certain bit of, of all of it is important, but, but what I don't want to do is spread, spread a dollar to five different people who are working on one issue. Let's, I'll take, for instance, baby drownings, just, just because I read about that, that's not something I'm concerned about. But, if there's five different organizations doing it, and we can narrow that down to three and concentrate the efforts geographically or whatever it takes, then I think we owe it to our taxpayers to do that. So, I'm, I'm hoping to be sitting down with Suzanne in the next few weeks to look at that, and I'll come up with some, some comments later. We talk a lot about property rights here in the county and, and here in these seats, but, but we have to realize something. With property rights, come property responsibilities, right? We're always teetering between legal, what we can do legally, and what's right to do. Well, I got a legal right to do that, so I'm going to do that. And what's right to do? So, I want people to understand that, that what's right to do usually works out for everybody. You saw Mr. Watts is going back to talk to, talk to the neighbors. I, I personally think that ought to be something that, that they ought to just do all the time, and normally they do. I know that happens in the cities a lot. When you, when you chat with your neighbors and find out what their concern's on, you realize that they're much more amenable to letting you be their neighbors. But individually, we hear stories about, about people that think they have rights, but don't, don't take care of their responsibilities. We are in an insurance problem right now, because people with, if you have a 22-year-old roof, what do you do in June? Do you put a new roof on? No, heck no. You hope the heck a hurricane comes, and your insurance company pays for it, when in fact, you needed a damn roof before, but now you got the insurance company paying. We have a responsibility to fix our stuff, not a responsibility to wait for our insurance company to pay for our 22-year roof. And, and guess what? If you can't afford it, maybe you're in the wrong house. People wait for hurricanes, I think, I think that puts us in the insurance spot we're in. People that can't afford their property protection and, and come to the county for help, or cities for help. Now, now, there's certain things that we need to do to protect them from, from our own infrastructure, but I, I think it's important that, that property owners pay attention. Lastly, in addition, and we talked a lot about the N-RAC and LID and putting requirements on people. Whether we like it or not, we're having a problem with the balance between, I'm not going to call it affordable housing, as in the program, but houses that are affordable and, and where people live. So, if we want to pile on and make mandatory LID, which I'm not saying anybody said, but if we're going in that direction, and adding regulation, with that comes cost. So then, then we'll have that argument over, "Well, my kid can't afford a house." So, by the way, if, if you, you know, we, we have somebody that occasionally looks at Realtor Zillow and says, "Well, I see a house here for $300,000." I, I think it's, I think it's time that some people consider not living in a two-bedroom house alone, picking up a roommate, and if you have two people that are making $50,000 a year, you can probably afford a $380,000, $350,000 house. And there are some of those, a lot of those in Volusia County right now. Might not be where you want to live, but I'll ask most of you here, did anybody live when they moved out of their parents' house where they wanted to live their first year? I lived in an open bay barracks and then on a ship. It wasn't my idea of fun, but I'm much happier now. So, some things to think about moving forward, but by and large, I'm, I'm still sticking with the less government, property rights kind of guy. Thank you, sir.
Councilman, I think I heard when, at the beginning of that, did you want to put, make a motion to put Team Volusia on the agenda?
Yes, a motion to put Team Volusia's, yeah, Team Volusia's, our contribution to Team Volusia and where we go from there, on the agenda, and, and have a discussion with the-
Good.
With the folks in Team Volusia.
And Matt Reinhardt makes that second. Any questions, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, and administrative note, that, that can happen in January, as, as we head up the budget discussions.
Okay. Staff will handle that. They're already on it. Okay, that takes us to Matt Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. A few things, actually, and no, nothing, no mention of the jail gentleman.
He just did.
Well, John actually did it first. In all fairness, John did it first, so. The first thing to expand on Mr. Johansson, on your comments, and the reason, I'll admit, I was the reason for that, that paperwork coming from Suzanne with respect to the, the nonprofits. It was brought up at a town meeting that the county of Volusia has separated any ties with nonprofits, which couldn't be farther from the truth. Just in the last two years, as you all saw in that document, and I sent that information to those individuals, out of the general fund was over $15 million, and out of grant funding was 4.3 million. That's just in the last two years since this council's been sitting up on this dais. So, that couldn't be more farther from the truth. So hopefully, the individuals that did not receive that information will get it and hear it. The next thing was asked about the Tonner Beach shores with the ordinance, I will bring it up. We are bringing that up for a future meeting, so just so those individuals in the shores hear that. There was some discussion about the ordinance that we've been discussing for some time, where I made the motion about the, at least waiting on that ordinance approval until after the SAM replenishment program was taken care of. So we are bringing that to a future meeting, so hopefully the individuals in the shores do hear that. We are working on that. I think Mr. Santiago asked the question already, I had on here, as far as an update to the ISB ramp. I do know, I spoke to a business owner over the weekend that literally has moved out and has separated all ties of that area, and then we're hearing from the two gentlemen that were here today. And it's true, and I tried to talk to that in my updates with individuals in that area, that in order to do one lane at a time, would have prolonged the issue, and there is an immense amount of infrastructure, it's my understanding from Mr. Bartlett, that would have to be addressed. I can't believe the, the piping and, and stormwater and all those issues that are associated with that one ramp in itself, so it makes sense to do it now. Unfortunately, it did negatively impact some of those business owners, but my que, and then a question was asked, I had written down here, was that work that was subcontracted? And I hear it is. That it is subcontracted outwork. In other words, we're not doing the work.
Sure, all of our major construction-
Major construction is, exactly. So, that was another question, so I'm glad they, that was answered.
Yeah, thank you.
There was another issue brought up about the McDonald Land. A young lady said it earlier about it coming up on the 13th meeting. Well, the 13th isn't ours, that will be on the forever meeting. It's on a Friday, if I'm not mistaken. Is that when the next Volusia Forever and meeting is being held, and will that item be discussed?
Well, today, you guys-
Yeah, they said something, well, she brought it, the reason I'm asking the question.
Today, you guys approved the list.
The list, exactly.
Now, it goes into another whole phase of negotiation, it could be years.
When she referred, my question is, she referred to the 9/13 date. That will be at a, is that an incorrect date? Okay, thank you. All right. Just want to clarify, clarity. And the, the last item, the 4100 block of South Atlantic Avenue, and I'm glad Mr. Rutledge was here today. I did tour that area, and I know Chairman, you did as well. And it, there is an oh wow factor. I mean, that, that is quite a bit of, of land that has disappeared. I did, in fact, receive the letter from Ponce Inlet, asking for their title, town, Ponce Inlet Support for Coastal Armoring. I have spoken to staff in great detail as far as the, what that would require. My question to this, to this dais is whether or not we want to entertain that for a future meeting to discuss it further. What can we do? And that gives staff the chance to bring, so everybody, not just the chair and myself are informed, but everybody, the opportunity to hear in detail what, what it would require in order to do what, what is needed, or what we can do or what we can't do. I'd like to make that motion, if, to bring it back to a future meeting. Second by Mr.?
We have a motion to bring the 4100 block back for a future meeting. Motion by Matt Reinhardt, second, was that Councilman Robbins?
Yes.
Okay. And, yeah, since Troy's not here, I'll say it for him. If it's important to you, it's important to me and, and the rest of the, the council, I think, if it's, it's your district, so-
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
I think that would be, I think that would be productive.
I'm not saying what we can do, but at least it starts the discussion and we can have that conversation.
That's right.
So.
That's right. Any, Councilman Johansson?
I had a quick question for George. George, is this, is this a one-off? Is this the only place we have this issue, or are we opening up? Not, not to say it's not worthy, but-
I think we'll try for this discussion, we have proper time, and we'll put together a map showing everywhere.
Yeah, thank you.
No C-Walk.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's important that we look at all, all the, I think it's important that we look at all the places where there's imminent danger, or some type of, of, some type of issue that somebody's concerned about where A1A is going to go away, or, or houses are going to go in. Again, back to property responsibilities, but-
Good point. Thank you.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor of bringing that topic back to the council, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries six to zero.
And lastly, on that, do, does this, do, does this letter need to be scanned as far as, because it came to me, or was it- because it came to me, or was it already done? George, do you know?
Yeah.
It already was. Okay, just so everybody has the opportunity. Okay, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that was significant from the mayor when they asked for help. I'm glad you responded. Famous last words, I'll be brief. I'm going to try and be brief. Rather than just put this on the agenda as Chair, I wanted to bring it up to the council to see what your, see what your feelings might be on it. I would like to bring back for discussion. We've done various things to try and increase attendance here. We've done nighttime meetings. Not sure that it's worked. Not sure that we're getting a lot of other people at night, especially when we go to midnight. By 8 o'clock, this room is empty except for Al and the News Journal. And John will sometimes be asleep. I would like us to consider having meetings on, Don, you're going to love this, here on the east side, or on the west side, and some also on the east side. Either at the Ocean Center, this is what we'd have to discuss, the lifeguard headquarters has the ability for that. The charter allows us to do that with public notice from time to time. So we would have to discuss what does time to time mean? Is it every other meeting? Is it once a quarter? And if we were to do it, I'm asking you to consider it. And if we were to do it, like, has it become our habit? I would like to put a time, a sunset clause on it, that we try it. And if it doesn't work, that we stop it. Because there, there's issues that come with it, moving people around and. So I'm just asking the council, what is, what are your thoughts on that?
I'll come out first. I'm not a fan of it.
Okay. Don Dempsey?
Jake is ahead of me if he wanted to--
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm overlooking Jake all day.
You kind of called it right, Don. You're not going to be happy. The county, we're the county seat.
We are.
Like it or not, Tallahassee, I'm sure we'd want to have some of them state committee meetings out of Miami, you know, to help out. But everything is held in Tallahassee, everything's held in DC. We're the county seat. We need to be here out of principle. I mean, if you want to vote to change Daytona to be the county seat, then so be it. But as long as we're the county seat, all this annex this and annex that and, you know, that's, it defeats the whole intent of what I believe was meant to be the county seat. All government business should be in the county seat, and it needs to stay here.
Because you live here?
What's that?
Because you live here?
No, it has nothing to do with it. It's the county seat. If you remember the branch jail debate 40 years ago, and all these courthouse annexes we've got, I mean, there's a reason why they're called annex and branch jail. Because they're supposed to be in the county seat. This is the heart of Volusia County government in Deland. And it's just, it's just, I've had constituents on the west side tell me that, you know, you go to a board of Realtor, any type of association meeting, they're almost predominantly all on the east side. And it gets kind of monotonous as a west sider to know that any type of important meeting in most organizations, oh, they all have to be on the east side, which is not right. And so, yeah, I'm an adamant no to anything being transferred to the east side when this is the county seat and this is where the work's supposed to be historically. Thanks.
Okay. Councilman Johansson?
Yes, sir. I was going to say the same thing. We built this beautiful building for this very reason. It's the county seat. I think this is where we need to be. And I am an east side guy. And it is a pain in the neck in the morning, 35, 40 minutes to get in with the traffic now that school's back. But it's worth it. This is where we, this is where we belong. But Chairman, I do concur that things aren't working out. And not that I've counted heads like we do at church, but I have noted, I don't know, I go to church now, I'm sorry. So, so, and I also pay attention to who doesn't put money in the pot either. So, but the daytime events bring more people. The nighttime events, especially when they wane in the midnight hours, which we haven't done a lot of, but we've done a few of, it starts to wear on people. To the point where it starts to wear on us. You see toward the end of an agenda, and it goes pretty quick. And usually, George tees them up so they can go quick. But if there's an issue that needs to be discussed, I'm afraid that after 10 o'clock, we're kind of like, ah, forget it, let's just go home. And that's not what we're here for. And it might be something you don't realize. So. Troy's not here. He's going to kill me. But I would like to make a motion in January to move back to days and keep it here.
So the motion is to bring that back to council in January?
To start going all day, all days from 9:00 AM to, starting in January.
In Deland.
In Deland. And the reason I said January is because Troy isn't here. And if this goes to a yes, he's going to have to make plans to get here. And I don't want to, I don't want to make him that miserable, so. And to some certain extent, I'm sorry, Don, as well.
Okay, so the motion by Councilman Johansson is to keep the meetings in Deland and only in daytime, and to bring that back to council in January?
No, to start day meetings in January, not to bring it back.
So you want to vote?
I'll tell you what, let's put it on the agenda to vote next.
Well, you have a, by charter, you have an organizational meeting in January anyway. So if this motion passes, that's direction up to Chris and George. The proposed meeting schedule they'll bring forward will--
Reflect that.
--reflect that, and you approve it at that meeting.
And that organizational meeting, just for my clarification, that organizational meeting is by charter has to happen in January, right?
That's right.
First Thursday.
Got it. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Chair, on that comment?
Yes. David Santiago.
Want to make sure that I understood what staff said. Based on the commentary that's been made, that it will reflect that. What does that mean?
The proposed meeting schedule that you approve, disapprove, or change at that organizational meeting, if this motion passes, would reflect--
If the motion passes.
All day meetings.
Okay.
I think whatever direction, whatever direction you give today will be helpful to George and Chris as they put something together.
Well, good. I'm glad you added "if the motion passes." And Mr. Chair, just to add my comments to that, if that's okay. I'm not, my vote is, I'm not ready to make that change yet. So I'll be voting no on it. I see more than one value to it. I agree the audience participation. But I think there's additional value to having that capability. And I think staff has done a pretty good job at adapting to the agendas and the timing of certain things that come before us. I know some things are already on a shot clock. But I think they've gotten better at managing the evening meetings with the agenda stuff. And for other reasons, I would be voting no. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But the motion is to bring it back so we can fully discuss it. Now we know how you'll, your vote, but you could, Don could change your mind in January as well.
Don's been doing a good job changing my mind today, not--
So, yes. So we both get what we want in January. We'll have to discuss location and time, and I think that's, would be a valuable discussion. And I hear, I think I hear what everybody's saying about it. Don?
Well, I didn't know, are we voting just to--
Bring it back.
Bring it back on the agenda so Troy can talk and any public input could be--
Yeah. In January.
In January. So nothing's going to change, nothing's going to be done.
If the motion passes, if my motion passes, they'll have daytime meetings on the agenda for discussion. If it doesn't pass, it'll probably stay day, night, day, night, day, night for discussion.
I thought I--
Either way, George has to, George and Chris have to bring back a proposed meeting schedule for you to approve or change or disapprove at your organizational meeting.
Right. So whether this passes or fails today, it's still going to come up in January.
It is. I think the only benefit, regardless of how it comes out, it gives some direction to what staff helps put together for you.
Well, selfishly, I'm against it, only because I'm kind of like Troy. I got a day job in this, but, you know, I'm not, it's not about me. It's about what's good for the community. So I don't know. I just think it should be, Jake has always said, you know, we don't want to vote on anything through comment. We want it agended in public notice and give everybody a right to come in and be heard. So I just, I'm not ready to vote on it, so I'm a no as of now, but.
But you're not, well, we'll see in a minute if you're opposed to bringing it back. It's going to come back anyway in January.
That's what I'm saying. It doesn't matter what I vote, it's coming back.
Councilman Johansson?
Yeah, so, I just, I just want to, I do want to beat a dead horse.
Here we go. You need a whip?
We got elected to do the job here. We didn't get elected to work around everybody's work schedule. If you can't, if you can't be an elected official during the daytime, then why'd you run for office?
I'm not asking, I never, that wasn't me that brought this up.
All right, so that's been my rub all the time. We are elected officials, and when we sign up for this, we signed up for the 20 boards that the chairman decides to put us on, which is an added responsibility. We signed up to be available to our public in a timely manner. And we, you know, when I signed up, I was every other week on Tuesday for a meeting during the day. Now, we changed it to days and nights. But I'm just saying that I think, I think that we had, we had an obligation and we thought, I had a vision of what I thought an elected office would be based on what I saw in the past. And I just want to make sure that we're not starting to change what we do as a council to suit our own best interest. That's all. We're not here for our own best interest. Thank you, sir.
Wow.
Wow, yeah.
Jake, I took this job knowing it was two Tuesdays a month during the day. Right now, I should be in court. I have coverage. Okay, I'm not asking any, the only reason I even mention that is to be purely transparent with everybody. Yes, I don't want anybody looking, oh, he's just doing it for himself. No, yeah, obviously, it would benefit me because I don't have to reschedule my hearings and stuff like that. I've got, I got a job. You know, I got to work.
Okay.
So, I didn't bring this up. That wasn't my idea that brought this up to change tonight meetings. And I even was transparent back then. That it does selfishly benefit me? It does. I mean, how am I going to say it doesn't? It does. Because I don't have to reschedule stuff. I don't have to rejuggle hearings and stuff like that. So that's why I even said it. But I'm not asking this for selfish reasons. I'm asking it because like just David said, you know, you're the one that always says we shouldn't vote on stuff, bring it up at the last minute. Everything should be agenda. I remember that coming up.
We're not, we're not voting to change anything right now. We're voting to see how it looks on the organizational meeting in January.
Well, it's coming up whether we vote yes or no today or not.
Absolutely.
Right. So what, what's this all about then?
Vote. Call it question.
Yes. All in favor of bringing this up in the January organizational meeting to discuss times of the meetings and location? The motion is to stay in Deland and to, and to only have daytime meetings, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But we're going to discuss it, and I have no idea how that vote will go right now. So that's the motion.
Mr. Chair, can you clarify who seconded the motion?
I was just going to ask, was there a second on that motion? Danny Robbins. Councilman Robbins makes the second. All in favor of bringing it back so that we can talk about it again? Say aye.
Aye.
Not the motion.
Pardon me?
I don't believe that was the motion.
Okay, the motion is to bring back--
Have the meetings in Deland during the daytime to be placed on the agenda on January's organizational meeting.
There it is. Chris, you better call the roll, because I only heard two ayes coming up.
Chair, could I just--
Yes, make sure you understand the-- The motion on the table is to bring back in the January organizational meeting, is it the 14th?
Would be the first Thursday in January.
To discuss having, this is a motion, to discuss only having daytime meetings and only in Deland. Doesn't say, you're not voting to just have daytime meetings in Deland. We're voting to discuss it in January.
I guess my question is, what's the significance of a yes or a no vote? It's coming up either way.
Virtually nothing. Call the question.
Okay. It just brings it back. Chris?
Mr. Robbins? Mr. Santiago?
No.
Mr. Dempsey? Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes. So I think it comes back to talk about again. All right. I had two other quick things. Is Ben in the room? Ben is in the room. Michael Dyer, your name is up here, is that?
Yes, this time it wasn't an accident.
Okay.
I won't belabor it now. You referenced it a little bit, Mr. Chair, but sometime before the organizational meeting, I'll make sure you have the language from the charter that speaks as to meetings and locations.
Okay, thank you. All right. Two, this is concerning flooding that I think we can do something about. The first one, Ben is 123 Tree Line Drive in Timber Creek. It's been an ongoing issue for a couple of years with a property owner that put in driveways, didn't install or remove culverts and filled in the ditch. So now the water runs across the street to neighboring properties. Where does that stand?
The last I recall was there was a neighbor or a property owner that filled in a second driveway without a permit. And I believe we made them go back and pull a permit and build it according to our standards with a culvert pipe. Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I can look into it and get you that information and see where they're at with that.
That was a determination. You just don't know if it was done yet or not.
Correct. I don't know where we are with the permit on that.
Would you--
Yeah, I can check on that and get you the information.
Because that would, I think that would solve the problem at least temporarily.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Stay here. Because the other one is, it may be a little bit more complicated. It's on Red Robin Drive. Are you familiar with that one?
The private road issue--
The private road--
Of Timoca Farms Road.
And we have, we can't go in and do anything. But a homeowner covered a culvert with a metal plate, put dirt on it. It goes to Jake's statement about, should I do a thing, can I do a thing? The result of that is, is that it's backing up the water to four other homes on this culvert and flooding them. Is it legal for that to happen? They can just close up a culvert on a private road? Does the neighborhood have to vote on it, or? Anybody know?
Turn back. I'm going to look to my friend Clay here on this one. We, I am familiar with it, other than to say it's, from a public works standpoint, private road, no public right of way. And I believe there's an HOA involved or a defunct HOA. I'll let Clay handle it. He's more in the two.
Our staff met with the property owner, identified the concern. They were identified to do some excavation to free open the area. They're going to be doing as best they can. But there is underground utilities in that area that would prohibit going down overly deep. We did go out there and identify also there was a larger issue in that the actual ditch that would drain the entire area is overgrown that feeds out to Timoca Farms Road. So what you have is a-- So what you have is a private development with all of this in place and inadequate authority via an HOA or anything else, and complete lack of maintenance of the main drain facility out to Timoca Farms Road. So we're working to try and get the one property owner to do the best they can, given the physical constraints from the power that's underground. And also just letting everybody know out there that if they went out and cleared out and cleaned the ditch that fed to Timoca Farms Road, that would probably solve the majority of the issues.
Yeah, and I agree. I just, I wanna make sure I understand this and nail it down. I can, I'm meeting with the neighborhood with a couple of residents. I'll transfer that, what you just said, everybody check your ditches. He can't do it. You have to do it yourselves. But covering up the culvert, it's not, I, I don't understand how that would affect. And again, this is not us, but if the excuse is from him, from that homeowner, that I'll disturb utilities, the culvert's already there. He just put a metal plate over it and covered it with dirt. He can remove that without destroying utilities.
Right. We were just looking to see what could be done as far as excavation or renovation to help improve it.
I went out and talked to him and I, I wanna know, you know, yes or no, was this the truth? He said that he met here with some legal staff, I don't know who, and the legal staff said he didn't have to do a damn thing. That, that's his quote.
We did have a meeting with code enforcement and our representative, our attorney who represents staff in code enforcement. I wouldn't say that we didn't say that you have to do a damn thing. We just may have indicated that we have relatively limited options from a county perspective. But it's still a situation that even if the county cannot force compliance, he still has a potential issue with a civil lawsuit. And, and a lot of these flooding issues, they come down to civil situations where, for example, a vacant lot is there.
We've lost quorum. We've lost quorum.
I'm not asking for a vote.
I mean, we're supposed to be in session when there's quorum.
Okay.
So.
While we're waiting on the, Clay, this is what, this, I think, hearing all that, this is what I need to know, since it's a private HOA, private ditch. He, is that area, that ditch, is it common area? Could one of the other three homeowners go out and remove the plate and the dirt and let the water flow so their houses aren't flooded?
I can't trust my memory on this, but if I remember correctly, we did not find any specific easements or otherwise that would allow for an HOA to go in there and do the, the maintenance or improvement there. So we'll, I'll have to go back and verify the facts, but I don't believe that there was an easement. Typically in the private road, private stormwater, you have an easement either on the subdivision plat or by a separate instrument that would grant who has the right to come in and do the maintenance. And in this situation, we did not find that.
I mean, what, I, I wasn't in this meeting, but from what I'm hearing about it, because this comes up from time to time is, there are some issues that the county does not have jurisdiction over, does not have a rollover. It is a private dispute between neighbors. And from what I'm hearing about this one, it sounds like that's the case or very close to it, so. And some folks don't wanna hear that. They want the county to get involved. I appreciate that. I understand. But, you know, there, it may be something they have to bring against the person that's causing them harm, and we're not a party to it.
So they have to bring it to court?
It could be, yeah.
Because what, what they're hoping.
I mean, I can't give them legal advice, but.
Yeah. What, what they were hoping is that this is land that benefits the whole development. It's a common swale. Can we just go out and, and clear the doggone thing without getting arrested?
We, we can't even give them that advice because that is interpreting their property rights and providing them legal advice without something very clear like a plat or an easement or something that actually designates who the maintenance entity is and what the actual rights are. It's, you know, that would have to be resolved by a judge or resolved by mutual agreement about who can come in and clear that area. So that's, you know, that's not something we can even kind of opine on, on whether or not the neighborhood as a whole has the right to clean the swale in front of your house.
These lot, these lots were created under our old exemption. So these are the two and a half acre lot minimums that we didn't require roads, stormwater, or any other identification in regards to how to address the infrastructure. So this is a situation where, again, the road was put in, there's no clarity as who's the maintenance. There's no real true stormwater other than a drainage ditch that feeds out to there. So we're not even aware of any easements on that ditch, to be honest.
Okay. Thank you for the discussion. I think what I'm hearing is that the homeowner's gonna have to take it to court. It's a shame that the action of one homeowner, that's exactly what Jake said earlier. He's flooding out the rest of the neighborhood and he doesn't care. He's giving them the finger. I'm surprised one of the neighbors didn't go out and just remove what he did. Pardon me? Or his finger. Yeah. So, okay. I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. Yes.
Quick comment.
Jake?
Because across the street, I had this issue with a, with a constituent, Ben. This Red Robin area, will they run into outstanding waterway, DEP? If they clear it out, are they gonna, are they gonna get in trouble from St. John's? And, and should we at least tell them, look, before you do anything?
I have been genuinely surprised at some of the things that DEP will claim as jurisdictional waters.
That's why I asked.
Especially of late, but I would always recommend that they, in a private property situation, if they're unsure, to consult permitting agencies to make sure they're not.
Chairman, if, if you're delivering that message, you might wanna get.
Yep.
I had a constituent that, that ran into a little bit of a problem trying to do the right thing.
Sounds like you had that come before in Port Orange before.
No, that was a, an actual Volusia County citizen that had a ditch in there.
All right. Thank you very much. I think the message was just delivered. And so we will adjourn at 1:28 until precisely at 6:00 PM for the budget meeting. And thank you very much.